Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call the Congress zoning board to review the order. Can I have the Secretary of Business read the roll?
Keith Plodier.
Here.
Lenny Jawick.
Here.
Denise Gray.
Here.
Bob Pro.
Yeah.
Russ Lockley.
Present.
Ed Ionati.
Yeah. Okay, let the record reflect that we have a quorum for a meeting tonight. And do I have the minutes from approval and minutes of the February 5th, 2020 meeting? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion is made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, we have, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Fire exits are to your rear, the exits to my rear taking into the building. So two fire exits are to your rear. Okay, tonight, Rodriguez, 12 Summit Road, that application, applicant has requested to hold that over to April due to, I believe, Brian's advertisement.
I, I'm not aware of the basis of the request. I think they just weren't ready to go forward. Did they get their planning commission review yet?
So they have their planning commission approval, I believe, however, they submitted a request based on, they're trying to get DEM permitting worked out first before they come before the zoning board. So they asked for a continuance until April 1st, 2020.
Okay, so if anybody's here for that application, that application's going to be held over to next month. The other one is Wheaton and Card at 1216 Town Farm Road. That application's also been requested to be held over to next month. So if anybody's here for that, that will not be heard tonight. Okay, do we have any other corrections to make on the agenda, do you know of, Brian?
Uh, no.
Okay. At this time here, I'd like to call the Congress zoning board to review the order. Can I have the Secretary of Business read the roll?
Keith Plodier.
Here.
Lenny Jawick.
Here.
Denise Gray.
Here.
Bob Pro.
Yeah.
Russ Lockley.
Present.
Ed Ionati.
Yeah. Okay, let the record reflect that we have a quorum for a meeting tonight. And do I have the minutes from approval and minutes of the February 5th, 2020 meeting? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Motion is made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, we have, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Fire exits are to your rear, the exits to my rear taking into the building. So two fire exits are to your rear. Okay, tonight, Rodriguez, 12 Summit Road, that application, applicant has requested to hold that over to April due to, I believe, Brian's advertisement.
I, I'm not aware of the basis of the request. I think they just weren't ready to go forward. Did they get their planning commission review yet?
So they have their planning commission approval, I believe, however, they submitted a request based on, they're trying to get DEM permitting worked out first before they come before the zoning board. So they asked for a continuance till April 1st, 2020.
Okay, so if anybody's here for that application, that application's going to be held over to next month. The other one is Wheaton and Card at 1216 Town Farm Road. That application's also been requested to be held over to next month. So if anybody's here for that, that will not be heard tonight. Okay, do we have any other corrections to make on the agenda, do you know of, Brian?
Uh, no.
Okay. At this time here, I'd like to do a ratification by the board for Cole 77 Remington Farm Road. The ratification of a dimensional variance to build a shed on the side yard, side yard for a setback of five feet where 15 feet is required, and to install a six-foot fence where the height limit is four feet. Do I have a motion to ratify this as voted?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion, we ratify that decision.
Okay, decision's been ratified and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. All right, the next one is Trevineal, 20 acres of Pine Road. That was a dimensional variance for a 10-by-10 shed with an eight-foot side yard setback where 13 feet is required for a special use permit to expand a non-conforming structure. And this is a ratification on this, do I have a motion to ratify this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we ratify that decision.
Second motion?
All right, motion's made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, Trustini, starting on new business, is the applicant here, 1987 New London Turnpike. Okay, can you please come up to the board, please? I guess we lost our podium. Uh...
You can just sit at the table, just make sure the mic is on, the switch needs to be flipped up.
Okay. At this time here, I believe, due to the attendance of the board, not your fault, we're going to start this right from the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. So would you explain to me what you want to do here? I'm sorry, I got to swear you went first. I'm going to ask you to stand up, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
Kelly Anne Guastini, 1987 New London Turnpike, Coventry, Rhode Island.
All right, do you have anything else for the record? Okay, thank you, let me explain to me in own words what you would like to do.
At some point a while ago, I believe it was last summer, some official of the town received an anonymous complaint about an illegal in-law apartment in my house. So in speaking with Carrie, she came out and did a site visit.
Yes.
The decision was made to solicit the town for a variance to officially make the house a two-family.
Okay, so you're in front of us this time to a special use permit and a dimensional variance to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. Now, you want a two-family or not, or an in-law?
I want a two-family.
You want a two-family, okay.
I also have a witness here tonight who can testify that the apartment downstairs is original to the house being built.
And the house was built what year?
1950s, I don't know, '53 maybe? I didn't bring any of my paperwork, I didn't know I was going to be redoing the whole thing.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
She's just here for a special use permit. The fact that it existed before really has no bearing. We should be just looking at the criteria for dimensional relief and the special use permit. We don't have jurisdiction to determine whether it's a grandfather use or not, correct?
Correct, that's a Superior Court issue. She's certainly able to put that evidence on for whatever purposes she might want to put it on, but the board cannot offer a ruling on a non-conforming use.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, the last time we started to hear that, we kind of got stuck on that issue.
Okay, now, it's being taxed as a multifamily?
I don't believe so.
So you really don't have any, any records of it being a multifamily?
Just her testimony.
Just her testimony?
The house has two house numbers. It's 1987-1989, it has two house numbers. It has two separate meters for electricity, it has two separate panels for electricity.
But you've never, I mean, you've gone through how many assessments, tax assessments?
I believe I have owned the house four or five years.
So you've at least gone through one, and there was no, it's being taxed and assessed as a single-family unit, correct?
As far as I know, it's just a single-family unit.
Okay, if you'd like to put this individual on record, like, you know, just for testimony, that's fine with me if you'd like to bring her up.
Okay.
Okay, the individual is?
Julie.
I will ask you to stand and give your full name and address.
Sure, my name is Julie Lima Boyle, and I live at 92 Cliffside Drive in Cranston, Rhode Island.
Okay, please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, honest, Adam?
Absolutely.
Okay, what can you add?
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call the Coventry zoning board to review the order. Can I have the Secretary of State read the role?
Keith Plodier.
Here.
Lenny Jawick.
Here.
Denise Gray.
Here.
Bob Crow.
Yeah.
Russ Lockley.
Present.
Ed Ionati.
Okay, let the record reflect that we have a quorum for a meeting tonight. And do I have the minutes from approval and minutes of the February 5th, 2020 meeting? Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay. We have, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Fire exits are to your rear, the exits to my rear taking into the building. So two fire exits are to your rear. Okay, tonight Rodriguez, 12 Summit Road, that application. Applicant has requested to hold that over to April due to, I believe, Brian, his advertisement.
I, I'm not aware of the basis of the request. I think they just weren't ready to go forward. Did they get their planning commission review yet?
So they have their planning commission approval, I believe. However, they submitted a request based on they're trying to get D E M permitting worked out first before they come before the zoning board.
Okay.
So they asked for a continuance till April 1st, 2020.
Okay, so if anybody's here for that application, that application's gonna be held over to next month. The other one is Wheaton and Card at 1216 Town Farm Road. That application's also been requested to be held over to next month. So if anybody's here for that, that will not be heard tonight. Okay, do we have any other corrections to make on the agenda, do you know of, Brian?
Uh, no.
Okay. At this time here, I'd like to do a ratification by the board for Cole 77 Remington Farm Road. Ratification of a dimensional variance to build a shed on the side yacht, side yard for a setback of five feet where 15 feet is required. And to install a six-foot fence where the height limit is four feet. Do I have a motion to ratify this as voted?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion, we ratify that decision.
Okay, decision's been ratified and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. All right, the next one is Trevineal, 20 acres of Pine Road. That was a dimensional variance for a 10-by-10 shed with an eight-foot side yard setback where 13 feet is required for a special use permit to expand a non-conforming structure. And this is a ratification on this, do I have a motion to ratify this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we ratify that decision.
Second motion?
All right, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Okay, Justini, starting on new business. This is the applicant here, 1987 New London Turnpike. Okay, can you please come up to the board, please? I guess we lost our podium. The-
You can just sit at the table. Just make sure the mic is on, the switch needs to be flipped up.
Okay. At this time here, I believe due to the attendance of the board, not your fault, we're gonna start this right from the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. So would you explain to me what you want to do here? I'm sorry, I gotta swear you went first. I'm gonna ask you to stand up, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
Kelly Anne Guastini, 1987 New London Turnpike, Coventry, Rhode Island.
All right, do you have anything else for the record? Okay, thank you. Explain to me in your own words what you would like to do.
At some point a while ago, I believe it was last summer, some official of the town received an anonymous complaint about an illegal in-law apartment in my house. So in speaking with Carrie, she came out and did a site visit.
Yes.
The decision was made to solicit the town for a variance to officially make the house a two-family.
Okay, so you're in front of us this time to a special use permit and a dimensional variance to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. Now, you want a two-family or not, or an in-law?
I want a two-family.
You want a two-family, okay.
I also have a witness here tonight who can testify that the apartment downstairs is original to the house being built.
And the house was built what year?
1950s, I don't know, '53 maybe? I didn't bring any of my paperwork, I didn't know I was gonna be redoing the whole thing.
May I speak to that?
Yes.
She's just here for a special use permit. The fact that it existed before really has no bearing. You should be just looking at the criteria for dimensional relief and the special use permit. We don't have jurisdiction to determine whether it's a grandfather use or not, correct?
Okay.
Correct, that's a Superior Court issue. She's certainly able to put that evidence on for whatever purposes she might want to put it on. But the board cannot offer a ruling on a non-conforming use.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. The last time we started to hear that, we kinda got stuck on that issue.
Okay, now, it's being taxed as a multifamily?
I don't believe so.
So you really don't have any, any records of it being a multifamily?
Just her testimony.
Just her testimony.
The house has two house numbers. It's 1987-1989, it has two house numbers. It has two separate meters for electricity, it has two separate panels for electricity.
But you've never, I mean, you've gone through how many assessments, tax assessments?
I believe I have owned the house four or five years.
So you've at least gone through one. And there was no it's being taxed and assessed as a single-family unit, correct?
As far as I know, it's just a single-family unit.
Okay, if you'd like to put this individual on record, like, you know, just for testimony, that's fine with me if you'd like to bring her up.
Okay.
Okay, the individual is?
Julie.
I will ask you to stand and give your full name and address.
Sure. My name is Julie Lima Boyle, and I live at 92 Cliffside Drive in Cranston, Rhode Island.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, honestly? Anna?
Absolutely.
Okay, what can you add to this application?
I don't know Kelly very well at all. My parents owned this home, and I grew up in this home. So I was born in 1972 and lived there until I got married in 2003.
So you moved there in 1972?
Well, I was born.
In 72?
In 1972. My parents lived there. From the time they were married in 1956, they lived in the apartment downstairs until they were able to purchase the home from their landlords at the time upstairs. And that was 1963, I believe, that they purchased the home.
All right, but your testimony is from when you were born in 1970?
Right, 1972, otherwise it's just from my parents.
So you lived there in 1972 with your parents?
Correct.
And you lived where, upstairs?
I lived upstairs, and my grandmother, who had moved from Massachusetts, lived downstairs. And everything was, as I recall, as a kid, everything was always separate. My grandmother had her own mail, her own mailbox, her own electric bills, all that stuff. Well, it was my grandmother that lived there, but it was, prior to that, my parents had lived there just renting from the owners. The Robinsons, I believe, was the name. It was you and Bob Robinson that owned the home originally. And then my parents purchased it from them. And then when my mother became ill is when we sold it. And on her behalf, as her power of attorney, it was purchased by Kelly. At the time, though, when it was purchased, I remember when we were going through the real estate and all of that kind of stuff. And I was surprised to discover that the records seemed to indicate that it wasn't a two-family. I was very surprised by that because it had always been so.
And it was advertised that way also.
It was advertised that way, and then-
But this is when you noticed this?
Well, just, I, my parents had lived in the home the whole time, so when we were going to sell it, because my mother became ill, she's at a nursing home now. We needed to sell the home for her care. And when we were going through that process of selling the home is when the Realtor informed me, well, I think we can only sell this as a, you know-
Single family?
A home, yeah. And at the time, the time crunch was such with my mother's medical situation and her medical bills, that we didn't pursue that. And so we just sold it away, it was written off, to Kelly. But that home was always, you know, always, always two kitchens, two bathrooms, two everything, and it was always separate. The basement was an actual door that closes off, and it was never anything. After my grandmother passed away in 1988, it was rented to family members. One time, my brother, another time a niece, like, it's been different people rented. But I remember my parents always for taxes and stuff, and they would always be able to claim that they were, you know, renters, like, that kind of stuff was always in place. So I was truly shocked, and then when Kelly reached out to me to say she was having difficulty with whatever she was pursuing, I said, yeah, I'll certainly let you stand before anyone and tell them that it was always two homes, because it certainly was. It certainly was.
Any questions from the board? All right, I thank you, you can take a seat. All right, do you have anything else you'd like, you, I have the assessment in front of me. It's considered one unit.
Okay.
I have your deed, I guess you purchased a 921, 2015?
I will disagree.
And there is nothing on here to suggest a two-family on the deed.
Okay.
It may have been advertised, like you said, but, and like your witness said, it was sold as a single-family.
Okay.
So you purchased this as a single-family. I have and I'll seek the solicitor's advice, but do I see any evidence here to support a two-family in any way?
Well, it's permitted under the zoning ordinance by special use permit.
Okay.
She can have a two-family there if she meets the criteria for the special use permit. And I think she needs some dimensional relief, right?
No, I don't, I don't believe there was any dimensional relief in this. But, you know, just so the chair is clear, we're not deciding whether this is or is not a legal non-conforming use. You do not have jurisdiction to make that decision. You can consider this information in making your decision on the special use permit, which is what has been applied for. A two-family use is allowed in this zone with a special use permit. So you still need to go through and address the special use permit criteria in making your decision.
Okay, the information I have now, it was at the most an in-law apartment. I know I can't use, but that's what it's been used for in the past.
Right, but now she wants to make it a two-family. She's waived her right to say this is grandfather. So now, all we have to hear from Ms. Gustini is whether or not she can meet the criteria for a special use permit.
You guys are pointing your microphones at each other.
It's out there. So are you familiar with the criteria you have to meet for a special use permit?
This has been going on a while because of issues with quarums, because Mr. Lockley has to recuse himself. I believe I reviewed it at the time, and there were no issues, but it has been a while, so I'm not sure.
All right, I'm gonna go through the criteria a little bit. Safety and egress. Do you have parking available for, how many cars do you have?
I have two right now, one's for sale. And I have parking space on New London Turnpike for two cars, sorry, three cars. And there's also parking on Inga Street where you can fit two cars.
For two cars? You have total parking for five cars?
She needs two cars per dwelling, two off-street spots per dwelling.
So that gives her, she's got five, so she's quite at four.
Yes.
Okay. Available off-street parking, adequate trash. I understand the town picks up trash all the way up to a three-unit, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so-
They currently pick up trash. When the new receptacles came out, they dropped off one to each of the trash and two of the recycle bins, so there's-
Okay, but I'm saying the town would pick it up because it's not a great, not greater than three units. All right, utilities. You testified already that you have two separate utility lines coming in?
There's two meters on the house, yes, sir.
And that's already there, okay. Screening and buffering. Necessary for screening and buffering. I don't believe there should be any. I will seek Brian's advice on this.
I mean, you don't have any real distinctions in use, it is on a main thoroughfare. You know, the testimony is that it's been historically used with, with multiple units, and we've not had complaints about issues pertaining to buffering.
Okay. Signs and exterior lighting. Signs are just, that's not not a part of this application. Exterior lighting is residential exterior lighting, which I don't believe is, should be a problem. Do you see any problems, ma'am, with exterior lighting? Okay.
There's exterior lighting outside the house at all entrances and exits.
Right, for individuals. It's not like you have lights shining to, do you have any lights that are shining towards the road that would interfere with?
No.
Okay. Yard in open space. It requires in that area 300 square feet.
Thirty thousand.
Three thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, I'm sorry, thirty thousand square feet in R20 zone for a two-family. The property in question is about a half acre. We're short on that. It's only 16,117 square feet.
It's a non-conforming, it's a non-conforming use, so-
Would you need a dimensional variance also?
The circumstances are what they are. I mean, the, the square footage is what it is. You can't, you can't get any more square footage to add to it.
Right, but the problem is, 30,000 square feet is required. How do we go about this, Brian?
That's the board's call, I mean, that, she's not proposing to expand the building footprint at all. This is where it comes down to your judgment as to, you know, whether or not allowing the status quo to remain on the property.
Okay, the biggest problem is, our next one is general compatibility with your voting lots. There's been no evidence of a two-family or multifamily residence in this facility. I do notice the old, I guess, Composy's Auto Yard down here, which is a commercial use. And that's not too far from here.
The whole area is densely populated, you know, it's the, it's part of the eastern side of town, which, you know, it's-
I agree.
There's a lot of people there, you know? And, I mean, the house isn't gonna change. So I, I do think even the, you know, the industrial areas around there, and I do think it's compatible with that area.
Are we better off shutting a few of these down?
There you go, whatever, just it.
I did send out the letters to everyone also, and no one, no one came to the meetings for them.
Okay.
I, I think you could make an argument that this has been in existence since the 1950s, and there's never been any complaints, so that in itself is evidence of compatibility.
I agree.
Okay. But it's been as an in-law technically since 1950, not as an lot.
Semantics.
You know, I mean, it's a play on words.
Not really, when the Boils first moved in, Julie's parents, they weren't related to the gentleman that owned the house.
Good point. Any other questions from the board? Okay. The other thing, conversion of this home from a single-family to a two-family does not create a a condition that would be, well, the septic system, is it set up for two-family?
City sewer.
City sewers, okay, so that's that would not interfere with the welfare and morals in the area. So we, that's great.
One, I pay sewers tax to Coventry and West Warwick. I'm not tax fees.
So if we handle this as a special use permit, this could be approved, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I agree 100%, I thank you very much for that motion. Do I have a second on that motion?
Do we need to see if anybody's here to speak on it?
That's correct, I need to see if anybody would speak on it. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak on this application, for or against it? Yes, sir, please come up. Give your first name.
John Donovan.
Residence?
865 Maple Valley Road.
Okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay, what would you like to bring up?
During the 1850s until 1963, I lived on Limass Street, and I was a two-family house then. We used to get our bus for school at the end of Inga Street.
And that was a what?
From, what, the 1850s till 1963, I was living there.
At this house?
No, on Limass Street.
Limass Street. And what can you tell me about this residence?
It had been a two-family then.
Okay.
To, you know, the best of my recollection, you know, throughout the 50s and into the 60s, when I left, it was still occupied by two families.
Okay, I thank you very, and do you see, was there any problems at that time?
No, no. It was the largest lot in the neighborhood there on, on the Turnpike.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for coming up. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this application, for or against, or just have a question on the application? Okay, I see nothing. We have a motion to vote on this tonight, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that, Chair.
Okay, that's been seconded, okay. I'd like to do a rule call vote on this application. Keith, how do you vote on this application?
I approve, Chair.
Okay, how about you, Lenny?
I approve on this, Chair.
Denise?
Approve.
I also approve. Ed? Okay, application's approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time and patience.
Okay. What do we have next? We have Old Business. Sherwood Valley Corporation. Is, can you have that read into the record, please? Can we read that into the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. For Old Business, the owner applicant is Sherwood Valley Housing Cooperative Corporation. Location is AP 17 Lot 41, 1 Sherwood Valley Lane. Zone is residential mobile home district. Applicants seek a special use permit and dimensional variance to build a 21 by six, 21 six by 28 addition to an existing community room that will be 24 feet from the property line where 100 feet is required.
Okay, applicant here?
Good evening, Michelle Hawes, is that the applicant, what's her name?
Okay, first name, please?
Michelle.
Michelle, and your, your attorney?
Yes, Andrew.
Okay.
I'm forgetting your last name for the record, I'm sorry. H A W E S.
Okay, and your office is located where?
In, on Centerville Road in Warwick, Rhode Island.
Okay, are you going to give testimony?
My client is here to give testimony as necessary, but I'm prepared to address the board's questions.
So you're gonna give testimony?
Yes.
Okay, and sir, your name is?
Richard Adams, President, Sherwood Valley Corp.
Yeah, residence is?
102 Sherwood Valley Lane, County.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both stand up and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay, please explain your application.
As noted on the record, we are seeking a special expansion of the existing non-conforming structure. And we're also seeking setback relief. There's a slight error on the agenda, it says that there's only 24 feet of setback, there's actually going to be 76 feet of setbacks. So the variance that is requested is 24 feet, because 100 feet is required. So the space between the property line and the proposed addition will leave 76 feet to the edge of the property line. And if you look at the- And if you look at the, um, the actual property line, it's a wooded area, the piece of property, the actual line itself, there is woods in between the adjacent owner's property and their own structure. So they're not even likely going to see the proposed expansion at all. Um, and in addition, uh, we have sent out notices and have received back no objection to the proposed.
Okay, and the reason why you wanna put this addition on is?
So that more people in the community can attend meetings. Currently, um, there are attending meetings there, and it's just very, uh, harsh to get everyone in the group.
Okay, so you have how many member units at this location?
One sixty-eight.
One sixty-eight, so looking at the size of the building you have now, it looks like it's a very difficult building to have all your members at a meeting, so this looks like this would be very much needed, am I correct?
Correct.
All right.
At any meeting, we have to have out that requires the membership to get together. We have to, uh, go with things.
Okay, so this will resolve that problem?
Yes.
Okay, now you've already been in front of planning?
Yes.
Okay, and I understand we got a recommendation from planning, Brian, on this?
Um.
On approval?
Yeah, I took this from the last meeting, um, last one's method.
Yeah, Sherwood, yep, and, uh, uh.
Yeah, we, there is a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission.
All right. Trash and storage, uh, in the area, uh, none of these items will be changed or altered by the proposed expansion. Utilities are already there and present. Uh, egress, uh, the property has a permanent access to Hill Farm Road by way of Sherwood Valley Lane, so I don't see any problems with that. All street parking, the community center is for the local residents of the area who can walk the facility or park on the side of the private roadway. Uh, screening and buffering is not applicable. Signs, uh, you just have a small sign out in front, office, and that's correct, okay. Uh, required yards and open space, at this time, uh, it'd be as present, which is not applicable. General compatibility with lots in the same area, um, the adjacent properties are the unit owners, and they are all single-family residents which would use this location. The use of this, uh, will not create conditions that will exceed the industrial performance, it's not applicable. General compatibility with the comprehensive plan disposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And granting this re, uh, in this application, uh, special use permit, the, uh, project should have no detrimental impact to the public safety, self, safety and welfare of the community. And we have an, an approved recommendation from the, uh, Planning Board. Do any of the members have any questions on this? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to see if anybody would like to speak on this application, for, against, or just have a question. Okay, so nobody would like to speak on this application? I'd like to have a vote, that we vote on this tonight?
So moved, Mr. Mutter?
I have a motion made. Do I have it seconded? I have it seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh, at this time here, I'm gonna start with Ed for vote. Russ?
Approve as presented.
I also approve, uh, Denise?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
Approve as presented.
Application's approved as presented. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, uh, the next application is S- Sapero on Shannon Drive. We heard this last night.
No, it was continued.
It was continued, okay, it was continued. Is the applicant here? Right, you went up, I went up there and looked at it. You put the stakes up.
Yes.
Okay, um, just for the record, please give your full name and address.
Seth Shapiro, thirty-three Sharon Drive.
Okay, uh, I'll remind you, you've been sworn in from last month. Uh, I went up there and looked on the facing the lot on the right-hand side. It looks like your property goes over on the other person's, and the back there.
Their fences is, is on our property.
Okay, my concern was, you have so much all the way over to the left, and five feet, I looked at five feet and I could stand it, didn't really, I don't understand this whole thing for five feet, I'm sorry, I just don't.
It's, it's not really the five feet on the side, it's the twenty feet in the back that was, seeking relief from forty feet to twenty feet in the rear of the property.
Okay, so it's twenty feet from the back?
The five feet, the five foot is just the way the building's rotated. If it's, you know, parallel with the street, I'm twenty feet off the back corner, but only five feet off of the front corner.
Okay, you're going up there and looking at it?
Fifteen feet, excuse me.
So you're only gonna have twenty feet in the back? See, what I'm looking at, I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you, is you could sell this tomorrow as a residence, and whoever buys it has no backyard at all, once you do only twenty feet. And we're only, you're only doing a dishonesty to your neighbors and everything else. Because we never know what's gonna be held in the future. You know, we don't know what the future brings for each and every one of us.
But that's why we can only vote on what's presented right now.
Exactly. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the board. I mean, that, that was my opinion when I went up there and looked at it, it's, uh, it's a very rocky, he's taking on a hip, tough project, a ra- rocky and tough area, um.
I went up to Mr. Chair and I, the, the homeowner seen me poking around up there, and he kinda explained to me what he's doing. All his view is to the front, to the, the water.
Correct.
Behind him is just a boulder field, and there's really nothing in the back to look at, right? And the way he's gonna put the driveway into the garage kinda makes sense, that it's coming up the other, the left-hand side of the property.
Problem?
I myself don't have a problem with the way he's laying it out.
Okay, but the problem I have is, to be honest with you, in the backyard, cause this will be sold sometimes, perhaps, a house, who knows when, you have absolutely no backyard for, you know, to cook out, eat in, or anything else with that twenty feet only. You know what I mean? I mean, what are you gonna do, put your, your picnic table in the front yard?
Yeah, but that's.
That's where the view is. I mean, you, you look out over the lake from the front. And the back is gonna be an open space area of several acres.
Hmm.
What necessity did you put in the building so far back? I refresh my memory.
I was trying to get the view of the lake.
Okay.
And build it into the, into the property because sixteen or twenty feet change in elevation.
Right.
Um, from the front of the, from the street to the back.
But you have plenty of room on the left side. So I don't, I don't understand why you need the five feet on the right side.
It's just the rotation. If I go twenty feet off the property line in the back right corner?
No, not the back, the whole building. We moved it over five feet. What would that do?
Right, so I'm fifteen feet off the front corner, I'm twenty feet off the back corner. It's not.
Cause I looked over there, it looks like there's plenty of room to the left side.
So the, the back right corner is twenty feet off the property line? If, uh, if you go back to that other picture you were just at? Yep, so the back right corner is twenty feet off. The front right corner, to make the building parallel with the street, is fifteen feet.
So you've lined up that, the, the footprint of the building is, is perpendicular to the street?
Correct.
Okay.
Or parallel to the street.
Parallel, I'm sorry.
Right. So again, the, the, the big thing that I'm asking for is the setback in the rear.
Why is it not set in the middle of the property?
Cause I'm gonna have a driveway going up the left-hand side of the property to pull into the building.
So the garage is gonna be facing your neighbor, not facing Sharon Drive?
It's gonna be facing the street. There's gonna be a side door on the left, which is shown on the plan.
So, so that's gonna be facing Sharon Drive?
Correct.
It's a carriage house.
Right, but what I'm saying, this side here, the right side is.
That's the left side.
So the two pieces of garage doors will face Sharon Drive, and then the side door will be facing?
Correct.
The neighbor's house. So you'll be able to drive in the left side of them?
Correct.
Also, right?
Correct, drive up the left side, in and out the front.
Now, you're not gonna have any windows other than the garage door facing Sharon Drive?
Correct.
So how, I, what, what's the view? There's no windows.
The, the view from, if you're in the front of the yard, you have the view of the lake.
In the yard?
Which proposed the second floor?
I'm sorry?
Which proposed the second floor?
Second floor, I guess he's gonna put, uh, residents in?
No, 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 that's what I'm asking.
Right, so it's, it's set up, it's set up for a one, it's set up for a one-bedroom.
Okay.
One-bedroom, but there's no view
Yep.
of the pond whatsoever, or the front.
Correct.
Unless he puts any dormers on the top.
Right, if I put a dormer, skylights or.
Now, is there enough property to build a house eventually and keep that garage?
There would be.
Or is that why you've got it overmore, so you can build a house attached to it?
If someday down the road, possibly yes, but I don't foresee that in my lifetime.
Where's the septic system of the?
It's in the front of the property.
Is the driveway gonna be covered?
Where the percolate test was?
No, the driveway's not gonna be covering it. Correct, where the percolate test was. Just behind that, we, we did a soil evaluation.
Any other questions from board members? All right, any other discussion?
Could we stipulate that, uh, they don't put a, a structure in front of this? Where they can't, can't put a, um, residential structure in front of a, another residential structure on the same lot anyways, right?
You can't have two residential structures on the same.
He could put one attached to it.
You could stipulate that if they do build another building eventually, that the upper one is considered, has to be.
Has to be removed.
Right.
What's your input on this, Brian?
It, it's correct. Coventry zoning ordinance does not allow for two detached dwelling units on lots under twenty acres. So that's not a legal possibility on this lot. Um, you could build a, a house and attach it, but now you've created an in-law apartment or a two-family dwelling unless you rip out the, the apartment over the garage at the same time as you build the house. So you might wanna stipulate that if a house is built, that the, uh, apartment either has to be removed or they have to come back here for approval of, uh, a two-family.
Wouldn't you have to come back anyway? I'm gonna ask our attorney, you'd have to come back anyway.
To build a house there?
Right, they, they add a, a house addition on it. Attach it to it.
They would have to, I think they would be handled by building. They just have to rip out the apartment, and then they'd be given a building permit for a house. Houses that permit dues there.
So long as, so long as the house didn't require any variances, it doesn't.
No, it wouldn't have.
It just has to fit in the envelope.
It wouldn't have to be connected if there wasn't a dwelling unit in the garage.
Okay.
And given the, the setup here, it's difficult for me imagining, to imagine this, um, the apartment being an illegal in-law, because you have to have ingress and egress between the two dwelling units in order for it to be an, an in-law. The only way to look at it would be as a two-family. And, um, that would require additional approval here if it's available.
Okay.
There's a lot of very, if, if they put another house and connect it, that could be just part of the house, as a bonus room or something.
If you could connect it through the second floor, yeah.
All right, anything else from the board members?
I mean, the comment in my staff report a- allude to the fact that, you know, one of the criteria for, uh, a variance is hardship, and I simply don't see what the hardship is that's been demonstrated here.
There has not been a hardship.
I, I don't believe so, no. I mean, it seems to be a matter of personal preference.
Okay, yes, I'm gonna ask, do you have a hardship on this particular?
My intent was to build the structure into the ground as much as possible. So that was the other reason I was trying to put it towards the rear of the property, so we'd be digging into the ground and using that basically as retaining, cause there are a lot of rocks, and we don't know what we're gonna find when we start poking around.
Okay, um.
We do know that Mr. Shapiro lives across the street.
Okay, that's a bonus.
Well, what we're doing is we're permitting a garage on a accessory use, as a primary use on a lot which isn't permitted by the joint owners. That's essentially what we're doing.
Repeat that again, Ms. Mutter?
You can't have an accessory use on a lot without a primary use. So you can't have a barn without a house. You can't have a garage without a house. And what he's asking you to do is permit him to have a garage without a house. And so he's putting an in-law apartment or apartment above it, so it's qualified as a.
As a house, right. So therefore, I don't believe he has to demonstrate, I mean, this is a legal.
You can, you can do that, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, he can't do it.
But that speaks to the hardship.
No, no hardship is required for that.
No, there is hardship, because he's asking for a dimensional variance. He's asking for relief from the zoning ordinance setback requirements in the rear. He wants twenty feet when I think.
Forty's required.
Forty's required.
But that's only because he wants to put his garage in a certain spot.
If you brought that back another ten feet, would that really mess it all up? Gave the backyard thirty feet instead of forty?
Instead of twenty.
Instead of, yeah.
I think it would if you go, if you go back to the other screen.
This one?
Yes.
So if you brought that ten feet closer to the, to the road, that would?
If I bring it ten feet closer to the road, that front left corner's gonna be closer to the property line. I tried to put it so that it was the least amount of, um, request for si- side setback.
Brian, do you have an overlay of where the septic system is gonna go on this thing, with where the house is positioned? Okay.
Yeah, you can see the, uh.
So if he brings that forward ten feet?
These are the septic trenches right here.
Right. So if he brings that forward ten feet, he's gonna be pretty close to that, and if that's where, if that's where the septic system is gonna go? he's gonna be pretty close to that. And if that's where, if that's where the septic system is gonna go, how could he put a house on the left side? He'd be driving over the septic system.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. So this would be the most.
Building it by driving over, even though the, the garage would be on the right-hand side, building a house attached to this, you'd be, you'd be using your construction equipment right over the septic's field.
Is that the only place he could put his septic system? On a lot, on the entire lot?
It was, it, that's where it was perked and that's where we had to do the soil test.
Right, but that's because you wanted to put the garage.
No, that's, that's where they, they dug. I didn't pick that spot.
The lot's full of stones, so this is, that's not really a bad place for the septic.
Saying hardship is the layout of the land, technically is why you wanna locate it where it is.
Correct. And the conditions.
Anything else from board members? Okay, I'd like to have a motion. Will you vote on this tonight? I'm sorry, that's correct. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Or have a question on this application, or would like to speak in favor of this application? Nobody here to speak, any question on the application or anything at all? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to have a motion from the board to, uh, vote on this tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second. All in favor say aye.
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 Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh, Eddie, I'm gonna start with you. How do you vote on this application? As presented? Or is there any stipulations you'd like to add to it?
I'd like to add the stipulation, I don't wanna vote it right away, but if in fact they do build a house somehow or another, then whatever building you have to be eliminated. The, the living space.
Just the living space.
The, the dwelling, yeah.
I mean, does that sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable to me.
Russ, how do you feel?
Approve with, with that stipulation.
Okay, that's a stipulation. I also approve with a stipulation. Denise?
I approve with that stipulation.
And Keith?
I approve with that stipulation also.
Okay, application's approved with the stipulation that, uh, the resident, residence area of the uh, structure would be removed if a, uh, str- another structure was built on the property.
Yeah, and I just wanna clarify, when I say dwelling unit, the area could still be used as a living space, but a, a dwelling unit is created where you have an area to cook, sanitary facilities and private space that can be closed off. So you can get rid of the dwelling unit by getting rid of the kitchen, getting rid of the bathing facilities. Whatever, you don't need to make it uninhabitable.
Correct.
But, I mean, you could also just get rid of the kitchen and make it, make it a non-suite bedroom.
That's correct.
Get a master bedroom with a attached bathroom.
You're correct, the space could be repurposed and that was the point that I was.
Right, that's all we're saying.
Okay.
Okay. Application's approved, that's, uh, with stipulation.
Thank you all very much.
All right, uh. Next one, fixed application, please.
Uh, next application is Centerville Bank. Location is AP thirty-seven, lot one-one-four, seven-seven-seven Tyoka Avenue. Zone is general business. Applicant seeks a dimensional variance to install three additional signs.
Okay. Applicants here?
I am not enjoying sitting down. I get used to it. Uh, Tom's Cronin, Nolan Daly, Barrero, Cronin, Rothman, Ra-Ra, I don't know, what's my name?
Okay, are you gonna give testimony?
I am.
Okay. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you. Please present what you'd like to do.
So, uh, Centerville Bank, same location as always been on seven-seven-seven Tyoka Avenue. One twenty-four, it gives own general business. Everyone's been waiting at Centerville Bank. And that branch, um, setting that current location. For a long time. And the current renovation itself includes a community room which can be reserved and used by any group, community group with a separate entrance. The current renovation is why I was here today. The bank spent substantial sums of money to renovate the branch inside and out. Renovation's nearly complete. In that renovation, they removed the side entrance on the north side of the bank. And they removed the ATM on the north side of the bank. Traffic pattern is a one-way driveway off Tyoka Avenue on the northern side of the bank with an exit on the southern side of the bank, back on Tyoka Avenue. Current main entrance to the bank is in the rear parking lot. It's, it's the only entrance. So the signal entrance is in the back parking lot, not visible from Tyoka Avenue. Now, here's seeking a variance of signs. There is a monument sign perpendicular to Tyoka Avenue in front of the bank, as allowed by the ordinance. And there's a sign in front of the bank on the building, at the front of the building, parallel to Tyoka Avenue. The architect who, uh, designed the renovation has requested three additional signs. And I'm requesting you consider each sign individually. Signs being requested. Uh, sign is to Centerville Bank on the north side of the building, perpendicular to Tyoka Avenue. It's a thirty-eight square foot sign. It looks very similar to the one on the front of the building, slightly smaller. Face of Borelli's. For a local van lot. The other sign is also on the north side of the building. It's a smaller sign. It directs customers around the bank to the rear, to the main entrance, to drive up in the ATM. None of which are currently located on that north side of the bank. You have to go physically around the bank to locate. And finally, there's a, a sign requested above the main entrance or in the rear of the building. Uh, which also says Centerville Bank, fourteen point seven square feet. Just delineated where the entrance was off. The, the entrance had, had been, that was one of the entrances before, now it's just a primary entrance. So we wanna use these, uh, signs to, uh, improve the traffic flow for the bank. In particular, the traffic flow traveling south on Tyoka Avenue, which would encounter Borelli's before it reached the bank. Borelli's has a nice pylon sign right on the property line which, uh, blocks some view of the bank. So if you're traveling south past CBS, past Borelli's, you would reach the driveway, the north driveway of the bank, before you reach the bank. This is the concern. I want you to, I feel, to identify where that entrance is, make that right-hand turn before you get to the bank. Two other signs are after the driveway. So this is a pretty straightforward application. There's no, uh, there's no long story from the nineteen fifty's involved. These are, these are designs by an architect and, uh, these are the requests.
Okay, um, you wanna put a sign right in the front on Tyoka Avenue, correct? That's the one there you're saying rear?
There's, uh, there is, there's all, Mr. Chairman, there is already two signs on this building. Uh, well, one's a, a monument sign in front of the building.
Right.
Perpendicular to Tyoka, you can see it as you drive by.
Okay.
The other one's right on the front of the building, fairly large Centerville Bank. Sign, I believe, uh, based on the photographs shown by Mr. Wagner, the upper left sign, is that correct, uh, Brian, is, is the one that is existing?
Yeah, that's the way I read your application materials.
I believe so.
So the side, side one is already existing?
No.
The front one.
The front one.
The front one.
I'm requesting the one that's marked side here and the one that's marked rear here in addition to one other smaller, uh, sign on the side of the building directing people around to the rear of the building and the other side of the building for the, uh, ATM in the.
If, if, I might just clarify that the applicant sought sign permits for the sign on the front of the building and for the monument sign, and they both complied with the zoning ordinance and uh, zoning signed off on, on the building permits for those signs. So those are approved and in place. It's only the, the, uh, side sign, the rear sign, and the parking lot signage that are at issue here.
I have a question. So in that picture, Brian, that says front underneath it, that's actually facing, um, Newport Creamery?
The street, it's facing the street.
Facing the street.
The one that says front?
Yeah.
Where's the monument sign?
It's out in the.
Right to the left of it?
Yeah.
So that's facing Tyoka Avenue?
Right.
And the one on the side is facing Borelli's, and the one in the back will be?
Over the back door.
Okay.
Which they've indicated is now their primary entrance.
Yeah, it has been for several years.
Okay, so they're putting, Russ, if I got it right, right here, is where they're putting it, right on this thing? Uh, drive up onto.
This, which one are you talking about, the side or?
Uh, it'd be the front.
Right, okay.
Am I right? That's right on here?
So the front one faces, um, the gas station, got it?
Am I right? Right here is where one's going?
There's a monument here, there's one in the front, there can be one on the side and one on the back. Nothing over here.
Nothing over here.
Nothing, nothing on the drive-through side.
So there's nothing on the drive-through side?
That's correct. There are some, there are some, uh, directional exit signs, no bank sign on the exit side, the south side.
So you're going on the rear of the building? And you're doing over by the ATM machine? So there's nothing gonna be blocking traffic?
No, no.
So there's not a safety problem here?
Nope. The signs don't move, so that's, that's a good thing, you know, they don't.
Right, the, the, the one, the only sign I really voiced an objection to is the one on the side of the building. Um, the, the, a- as I explained in the staff report, you're entitled to one wall-mounted sign. That's the sign on the front of the building. You're entitled to one freestanding sign. That's the monument sign that's out on, uh, o- out on the road. And the zoning board is allowed to exempt certain, um, off-street directional signs to help facilitate, uh, circulation in the parking lot. So the parking lot signs, I think, are, are rightly subject to an exemption, should you vote to do that. Um, but frankly, the, the sign on the side of the building, it's an additional wall sign that they're not entitled to. Um, and it's really, um, in some sense pointless because it's pointing towards the same people that the monument sign is already out there doing. The people driving perpendicular to the building on, on Tyoka.
In essence, the picture that says side, look up to the blank between the flagpole and the blank, that's probably where this, this, the front sign's gonna, so it's gonna say Centerville Bank and Centerville Bank together.
Yeah.
That front sign's already there.
That's kinda busy. The Cent- Cent- the, the front sign's there already?
Yes.
Okay. Is it big like that, Brian?
Yes.
It is, okay.
So that, isn't that where the, the te- temperature thing and the time used to be?
That's the monument.
See, but I think I understand what you're saying.
So why, why don't you just put the temperature and the time back and it'd be, be happy?
So if you're coming up.
If that will please the board, I, I'll bring it up.
You're coming to Tyoka Avenue.
You're coming to Tyoka Avenue, you go past Borelli's. If you're actually looking for a sign, by the time you see that sign, you're already past the entrance, am I correct?
That's correct.
So that's why you're trying to put this on the side.
Is there an entrance into the parking lot from Williams Street?
No.
No. Because you have to drive through, uh, it, it'd have to drive through the. Newport Creamery property. That's right.
You're sitting down.
And you can't go in, if you pass it, you can't turn in because it's a long way coming out. The only entrance.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
First one, past Borelli's.
That's just like asking if the Shetland ponies can go in there. That's, in the back is the Shetland pony farm.
That's right, that's right.
He's talking about old stuff now?
Well, Artie gave me the information since he was the fire chief.
Right. Wood Street.
I kinda understand the reasoning for you trying to get that sign on the side.
That makes sense.
You, you clarified it for me too, I'll be honest with you. I can see why he needs two signs there. And, uh, now what was this that, there's a, a building?
Community room or something?
Community room.
So part of this was, uh, is a boardroom in the bank. It has a separate entrance. And they, they try, they're trying to publicize this, which is why I bring it up. And, uh, any community organization can reserve it. It doesn't have to be during bank hours to give you the key pass code. And you can have your little league board meeting or your, you know, girl scout, uh, meeting in there at any time. They, they want people to use it, uh, for these purposes.
Did you know the occup- occupancy roughly?
Uh, I would say about twenty-five, um, at, at a large table. Get, the room can be rearranged. That was my, my commercial.
That's why I kinda.
What's the mortgage rate now?
Three point seven five today. Get out there and refi it and don't forget my name.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or have questions on this application? Or anything, uh, against this application? Anybody here would like to speak on this application in any manner or form? Okay, I see nobody would like to speak on this application. I'd like to have a motion that we vote on this tonight.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh, I'm gonna start down at this one. Keith, how do you vote on this application?
I approve, Chair.
Denise?
Approve.
Uh, I also approve, Russ.
Approve.
And, uh, Eddie, how do you vote? Okay, next application.
Next applicant is Louis Cruz Vanity Rodriguez and Horremos LLC. Location of property is AP sixty-five, lot eleven, two-two-five-eight Flat River Road, Village Rural Commercial. Applicant seeks special use from it to operate a dog and cat grooming salon.
Hi, uh, good evening, uh, Chris and Tracy, uh, from imminent orgy, uh, fifteen hundred Missat Hill Road. I'll be testifying for, uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, all right, okay, please raise your right hand now. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you very much, okay.
Uh, T R A C Y. And I just wanna, uh, note that, uh, Ms. Rodriguez and Louis Cruz are, um, going as a company called Bougain Rouge LLC, um, and that's on the application as well. Uh, they're seeking a special use permit, uh, to hold up a, uh, a dog, a dog and cat grooming service um, in, uh, at, uh, twenty-two fifty-eight, uh, Flat River Road, um, which is owned by GRC, uh, that's been required for, uh, panel purposes, uh, in GRC's own areas. Uh, it's, uh, gonna be a new business, a family business, uh, it's gonna be by appointment only, so, uh, it's gonna be sort of a, a small mom and pop pet job. Uh, and, uh, there's going to be, uh, it's gonna be by appointment. there's going to be, uh, it's gonna be by appointment only. They're planning on operating their business hours from nine to four. Um, I believe, uh, it's gonna be food day is Saturday initially, but since it is a new business, that might be something that maybe have a Monday on there, dropping on the day.
But you're not gonna do Sundays?
No, Sundays.
Okay.
And, uh, and, and so it might, it, the date might switch, uh, they might drop a day here and there based on demand. Um, they're gonna only have one appointment there at a time, so it really won't be a small operation. Um, the only time they will have multiple dogs there, uh, is if there's a two-dog household. And, uh, there's, uh, it's a existing, uh, commercial area. Um, there is, uh, three parking spots right in front of the portion of the building where this unit is along with a backyard, side yard, um, and, uh, I believe prior to, uh, it tends to be used, um, for a dog and cat purposes. It was, uh, it had a koi pond sales there as well, so it has utilities of that major that can supply enough water for main dogs and cats.
All right, so it has a septic system all there that's been approved?
Well, I, the, the, I believe the septic is with the owner and there's, I think there's two other businesses that use septic there as well, but.
So what other businesses are using the septic, the septic system as well? Now, is this a state-approved septic system?
I'm not sure at this time, but I.
You'd have to have that information to approve that. I ain't familiar with the location.
Oh, I'd like to add as well, they're not planning on keeping, uh, dogs there overnight. Uh, speaking with Tom Burke, that makes it so they don't need a kennel license to say they, they need to be sold for a kennel. Uh, but, but since they're not keeping dogs there overnight.
Yeah, just to clarify on that point, the, the zoning ordinance, its definition of kennels, lumps, grooming facilities in with boarding facilities, so they are all treated as kennels, even though in this case they are not proposing to board animals.
So they're just here for a special use?
So they're here for the special use permit that happens to fall under the kennel thing for grooming.
No, no, they can't board.
They can't board. Um, I don't understand with the kennel license, you can't.
No, they're not, they're not asking to board. They're asking to groom. You will, you will be approving a special use permit for pet grooming.
Pet grooming business falls under the broad definition of kennels found in Article Two.
Uh, we were in front of, uh, landing last week as well and received a positive recommendation.
Okay, I don't believe until we know that there's an acceptable septic system there that we could.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that because there's a liquor license in that building.
Yep.
Because of those, that, uh, it was passed the, they.
We don't know that.
Well, they don't hand out liquor licenses on this. If, if it's.
Well, um, you could make it a condition of the approval that the, they provide.
State-approved septic system.
Staff before any.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this in the board? All right, let me see if there's anybody here would like to speak in favor of this application or have a question on the application or like to speak against the application. Is there anybody here? Okay, I'd like to have a vote, motion. We vote on this tonight?
Can I ask a couple?
Yep.
Quick questions. What are you gonna do about the trash?
Uh, the landlord, um, uh, provides trash removal at the.
Private trash removal?
He provides a dumpster for all, everybody?
Uh, yes.
Okay, now, so with this here, he'd have to provide a larger dumpster?
Well, if I would, if the dumpster was being used when the prior business was there, then not, it, it would be, the dumpster would be appropriate for, I think it's three, uh, businesses in that strip.
So you got the, you got the pond pub, you got this one here and what's the other business? Massage.
Yes.
This, this is an, an existing commercial business. They're not proposing to expand either the structure or the number of units in the structure, so they're filling a, a vacant space in an existing commercial structure.
And, and I think it's a good idea, but my biggest concern is the septic. Because you're gonna use much more septic with this one than the previous use that was in there. Plus you're using a lot of the septic with the, with the bar too, so.
Right, but, but D E M's rules are gonna have a specific amount of flow capacity for a commercial structure based on the number of units in the.
As long as it has been state-approved.
Uh, I mean, I have to assume it is, I mean, you can't build a building in this area of the town without a means of getting rid of, of wastewater.
Okay.
The other thing is they're only proposing, and if you're worried about that, they're only proposing a couple dogs at a time. It's not like they're gonna have five or six dogs at a time. You can limit their.
But we can do it with a stipulation, correct?
Correct.
Not gonna be tech over there, it's gonna be, uh, a small.
Right, okay. Yeah.
By appointment only, one or two dogs.
Yeah, okay, uh, all right, do I have a motion to vote on this tonight by the board?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it.
The only thing I have is that, um, I, I, I don't wanna limit this young lady to, uh, you know, only one or two dogs at a time. Um, my groomer now, I can go there and she's got, you know, five or six, sometimes seven dogs, you know, in her facility that are, are waiting to be done. And if ladies, if this young lady's business can grow, I don't wanna limit her to only to have, you know, two dogs on the premises at one time. She's got, um, at least three, possibly four grooming tables. One, one, two, three, you know? So, I mean, I don't wanna limit her to the number of dogs she can have if she, you know, if she builds a decent business. And, and I think Brian is correct when he says that, and, and Jane is too, when, you know, the, they wouldn't approve a, a three-unit commercial building without a proper septic system. So, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the septic system at all and I don't wanna limit this young lady from not being able to grow her business and become successful.
Alls I'm saying is I'd like to make sure it's a state-approved system.
I, I don't think the building could have been built without a state-approved septic system.
Back then it could have been. This is an old, old building. But if they got a state-approved septic system, then it's no big deal.
I mean, if, if.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't wanna limit her, all right, so if we make it conditional that they give us some sort of documentation that it's a, a state-approved septic system?
Yep.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit her being able to grow her business.
I, I, I would concur, um, I, I, the septic system here is not something that makes me nervous. Um, uh, but if, if it will make the board feel better to.
That's all.
Look at it, we can.
We've done our due diligence.
We can double-check with the building inspector's office to see if they have a copy of it. If they don't, we, I'm sure the applicants will be able to provide something from D E M.
Correct. All right, any other comments from the board? Okay, Keith, how do you vote on this application?
What do we?
With, uh, with the stipulation of the state.
Yeah, with stipulations that we did.
Uh, that'd be the only stipulation I know of.
Just the, oh, on site was. I approve with the stipulation.
With the stipulation. Uh, Denise?
I approve with the stipulation.
I also approve with stipulation. Russ? Ed? Okay, application's approved with stipulation. Thank you. Next application, please.
Next application is Rita McNeil Kathleen St. Germain, AP thirty-nine, lot one-twenty-four, ten Pembroke Lane, and AP thirty-one, lot sixty-six, three oh nine Tyoka Ave. Appeal of merger of non-conforming lots under common ownership per Coventry Zoning Ordinance, Article Eight, Section eight-eight-one.
And Mr. Chair, we, this is technically an appeal, so you're going to need to adjourn the zoning board of review and convene the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah, correct, all right. This time here, I'd like to convene from the Coventry Zoning Board of Review to the Coventry Zoning, uh, Board of Appeals.
Chair, can we have five minutes?
Yes. We're just gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm trying to, trying to find out what, where that is.
Which one are we on? Oh, I got it here, okay. I think this is it here. Yeah. Temple, line, car.
No, no, it's, it's, it's the zoning official.
The shoes, are you walking out?
Twenty-eight?
Yeah, it looks like it's.
That's a big one, yeah. Yeah, that would be, yeah.
No, I, I know. No, I know, I, I. Oh, one other question.
Rotate the stock. Gotta rotate the stock.
Oh, I really, I really didn't miss any.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I was supervised. I don't, I don't really work.
Oh, good, that's good. I was, I was thinking it like, oh, I didn't miss any.
No, no. If I was a mechanic or something still, I would be able to work.
Oh, true.
You know, I, I was, uh, I was able to sit at my desk and just.
Do it, yeah. My buddy was at that, had, had, he did the same thing. He was, he's an accountant, so he just kinda, you know, knew a lot of this, you know? Good. Yeah, I have a few people on Facebook that I, I see them out there. You know, Gary Murray or anything like that. Every, he, he's always at the, uh, misnag bar, he's always.
I don't, I don't know.
Still looks the same, just like all of his less hair.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, no, oh. It's in our building. Yeah, that's down the hallway. Everybody and their brother, they put up the most ridiculous signs, like the arrows are so stupid and people men like all by all. I know. You know those houses in Paulsbury? I don't know. And then people drive big SUVs.
Ready to go?
No.
Sure.
Oh, twelve, yes. Oh, wow, I'm looking at you.
Are, are we ready to restart?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to call a board of review back in order. Thank you very much. Board of Appeals, I'm sorry. Uh, Mister Cronin, go right ahead. You've got his full name and record and, you're, you're good for it.
Well, I'm a.
Your applicant? Yep. I, I show swear him with his applicant.
Because it wasn't on the record before.
That's correct, okay. So Mister Cronin, I will swear you in, and the young lady next to you. Okay, you have the full name and address on the record? Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board? Thank you.
Mister Chairman, as you're awaiting as a board of appeal, slightly different situation than we're used to. I represent St. Germain, recently inherited a couple pieces of property in Coventry after my mother, who I lived at for her whole married life. The two pieces are AP thirty-nine lot one twenty-four, which is ten Pembroke Lane, and AP thirty-one lot sixty-six, which is either zero Pembroke Lane or three oh nine Tyo Gav. But anyway, that, that's, the, you see the house on one twenty-four, sixty-six, the vacant piece of land? There obviously is. The, um, clients sought to sell lot sixty-six. And when they went to the town for, for investigating the possibility to do so, the town changed its position and informed my client that that lot had merged with AP thirty-nine lot one twenty-four by operation of the zoning ordinance. So from nineteen seventy-five through two thousand twenty, the town of Coventry treated these two lots as separate, no blow lots. We have tax records going, going back, those tax buildings in the east. I have the tax assessment for twenty twenty sent out last week with me here, actually. Let me give you a little background first. AP thirty-nine lot one twenty-four, ten Pembroke Lane has the house. It's seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven square feet on the corner of Pembroke Lane and Columbia Avenue. It's in the Oak Haven neighborhood. Lot was first subdivided in the Oak Haven subdivision in nineteen fifty-one. Purchased by my client's parents in nineteen fifty-two. And Miss O'Neil, uh, my client's mom lived there until her passing in twenty nineteen. AP thirty-one lot sixty-six, as I said, either zero Pembroke Lane or three oh nine Tyo Gav Avenue. Eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven square feet. It's on the corner of Tyo Gav Avenue and Pembroke Lane. It's adjacent to Tem, Pembroke Lane to the southwest. It's first subdivided along with the other lots on Tyo Gav Avenue in nineteen seventy-five. You can see the lot, uh, directly adjacent to it to the left. You can see the lots go straight down Tyo Gav Avenue. That was in nineteen seventy-five subdivision approved here in the town of Coventry. All of those lots have houses on them, except this, this is the, the last, the last lot. So as I mentioned, the, the, uh, my client's deceased mom and dad purchased that property in nineteen seventy-five. At the time of that purchase, that lot met the zoning requirement of ten thousand square feet for a residential lot. It was purchased as an investment by our parents, and they always treated it as a separate lot, maintained it as such, and informed their family that they thought they could sell it during retirement or some profit offer in some way. The, uh, that subdivision, all of those subdivisions were approved by the town at the time the lots were created. Each of the lots are pre-existing nonconforming lots under our current zoning ordinance. The current zoning is R twenty, which was created sometime after nineteen eighty-one. These lots are both created before nineteen eighty-one. So the zoning ordinance, uh, states that, uh, two lots, nonconforming, adjacent, will be considered undivided fossil land for purposes orders. So when my clients went, despite the fact that they've been paying taxes on the two lots, decades, informed that the lot had merged with all one lot. So, this is, this is a concern to my client, but in some ways also a concern to the town. The Coventry zoning ordinance does not comply with state. Uh, Mr. Solicitor, may, may I distribute the statute?
Uh, sure.
Mister Chairman, may I?
Please.
I'll, I'll give you a copy of the state law that the zoning enabling act forty-five, twenty-four, thirty-eight, general provisions, substandard lots of record. I don't wanna get yelled at if you're facing the wrong way.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Wagner, how's the, uh, town ordinance up here on the board? You can see it's, it stops where the state enabling act states, any city or town adopting or amending a zoning ordinance on this chapter shall regulate the use or uses of any single substandard lot of record or contiguous lots of record at the effective date of adoption or amendment of the zoning ordinance, notwithstanding the failure of that lot or those lots to meet the dimensional indoor quantitative requirements, indoor road frontage, or other access requirements applicable in the district as stated in the ordinance. Provisions may be made for the merger of contiguous unapproved or improved and unimproved substandard lots of record in the same ownership to create dimensionally conforming lots or to reduce the extent of dimensional nonconformance. You can see that I violated the next section, and this is where our Coventry's ordinance falls down. The ordinance shall specify the standards on a district-by-district basis, which determine the mergers. The standard shall, oh, excuse me, I inserted where it's appropriate in there. The standards include, but are limited to, the availability of infrastructure, the character of the neighborhood, and the consistency with a comprehensive plan. So interestingly, the Coventry zoning ordinance does this for RR two, RR three, RR five. Sets out a standard. If you have a nonconforming lot of record in those districts, it tells you that they can be kept separate under certain circumstances. It literally says that they're a minimum two acres wide, no matter what zone they are part of. Completely silent on R twenty. So Mister Wagner, uh, his, his hands are tied. He didn't have the ability to evaluate whether this lot should be accepted from the merger provision based on the standard set out in the state law. So what I'm here to do is ask you as a zoning board of appeal to apply these standards as required by the State Zoning Ordinance Act. So the, uh, I'll, I'll go through them as best I can and, uh, we can discuss them. So if the, if the ordinance, uh, had the standards as required, the first question would be availability of infrastructure. So the vacant lot has public water, public sewer, it's immediately adjacent to a state highway, and all modern utilities are available. Second characteristic, second requirement, character of the neighborhood. So ten Broke, ten Pembroke, or the Oak Haven flat. And each and every one of those hundreds of houses is on a lot that's less than ten thousand square feet. This would be the biggest lot in the neighborhood. The lots are the same, the lots are the same or small size on Tyo Gav Avenue, which were created at the same time. All have houses on them facing Tyo Gav. I'm not aware of any issue with those. They, they conform, they make up the neighborhood, you know, the lots are the same or similar size. And a similar house built on this lot would fit this, this neighborhood. The lots in, in, the lot immediately adjacent to seven thousand seven hundred square feet, and the lots in Oak Haven vary in size. But, but they're certainly, uh, of less or equal size to this lot. The final item that the state requires us to view is consistency, comprehensive plan. So it's a residential, so I, I should say, right, I haven't said, but I should say that, uh, we would like to sell a lot for residential purpose. And by all means, are willing to limit it. See, in R twenty, so we're not trying to change that. So we use a residential, so residential use in a residential zone. Uh, interestingly, uh, Falls Bridge Drive was approved by the town council this time within the past two years, and houses went up starting last year on Falls Bridge Drive, and a PUD. And I have to do that project, and I requested and received, in that entire neighborhood, lots of ten thousand square, brand-new neighborhood in the town within a quarter mile of this neighborhood on the other side of town. Brand-new lots, large houses on them, which is not what we're considering here, but the large houses on them. Not acceptable by the town. So that's my analysis of the standard required by the state zoning ordinance. So, probably the shock and surprise element to my client came because, you know, their pa, their parents, Michael and Kathleen, had paid taxes at the town of Coventry's lot at full value. The assessment issued on February thirteenth, twenty twenty, values this lot at ninety-seven thousand dollars. Their folks are in demand. You know, and, so that, that certainly is, is like the element of surprise, uh, to my clients, and it's certainly worth, uh, consideration by this board, but I wouldn't say, I, I'm not arguing that that's a determinative fact. I'm just telling you that that's the way the town has viewed it. Up, up until February thirteenth, to my knowledge, the, I printed, received the tax assessment from the website, which again, probably not, you know, worthy of, uh, you know, full payment credit, but printed out today, two separate lots.
Two separate tax.
Two separate tax.
Okay.
So what are you looking to do?
I am looking for a determination that lot sixty-six, the vacant lot, is a buildable lot. It did not merge. Because when, despite what our ordinance says, if it kept going in consistency with the state enabling act, and you applied those principles, Mister Wagner would have had the opportunity that this board has now to apply those principles and find that this is an exception to that ordinance, and that merger should not be. Thanks. My client's here to answer any questions? Oh, I have one more thing. I apologize for this. So our ordinance, uh, you can, uh, write it down, but you can see the last sentence in that ordinance refers to Section eight seventy, which in, in this case would be eight ninety, nonconforming lots of record, building setback required. So we have this chart in our zoning ordinance, which does include R twenty for nonconforming lots. And for this size lot, it would be required, front yard setback of twenty-five feet, a rear yard setback of thirty, and a side yard setback of twenty feet on each side. And we're not asking for variance from that. We would be willing to conform with that aspect. Thanks. That's, I apologize to that now. I have the, uh, most recent assessment from the town dated February thirteenth, twenty twenty. If the board has any interest in reviewing that, and if it's acceptable to your solicitor, we can distribute that.
Sure.
I'll, I'll show it to Mister President.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to answer?
Not this time.
Okay, um, at this time here, does the board have any questions of the applicant? Okay, at this time here, I'd like to turn it over to our attorney, if she has any questions.
All right, I'd like to hear from the chairman.
Brian?
Yep, um, so, in, insofar as the planning department is concerned, I understand a lot of the arguments that Mister Cronin is, is making. It is certainly, was set out in the original plat as a, as a separate lot. It fits in with the rest of the lots in the, the neighborhood. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have a merger provision in our ordinance, like most communities in, if not all, communities in Rhode Island do. It is the intent of these merger provisions to bring nonconforming lots into conformance, or at least better conformance with modern zoning requirements. Anytime two lots, two nonconforming lots of record are held under common ownership, they are merged by operation of law. It's automatic. And the, uh, people out there who are familiar with these provisions will never hold abutting lots under the same name. You will see lots of instances where husbands and wives hold the different lots under their individual names precisely to prevent them from merging. This is, this is a, a well-known feature of zoning in Rhode Island, if not most of the Northeast or the United States. There's no dispute, Mister Cronin makes no dispute, that the lots were in fact under common ownership at the time this ordinance came into effect, in, uh, I believe it was May nineteen eighty-one, when our zoning ordinance was reenacted. I disagree with, uh, Mister Cronin's assertion that our ordinance does not, um, take into account various characteristics in the R twenty zoning district. In fact, I would argue it's actually baked right into the, the zoning ordinance because we have different lot standards in R twenty for R twenty with public water or sewer and lots without public water and sewer. The, the minimum lot size, if you have water or sewer, is twenty thousand square feet. The minimum lot size, if you don't have, uh, public water or sewer, is an acre in the R twenty. So it, the, the, uh, the questions about infrastructure are actually baked right into the, the ordinance. With respect to, uh, Mister Cronin's reference to Falls Bridge Drive, I'm, I'm sorry, but he's comparing apples to oranges. That is a different zoning area. That is a, a PUD. It was rezoned for that purpose. It is not part of the R twenty zone. It, it, it's really not an analogous, um, comparison.
Yeah, but wasn't that done just to get more lots out of that land?
I can't speak to why that was, why that was done, or why it was, was allowed. But it is not part of the R twenty zone anymore. So it's, it's, the position of, of the, the staff that these lots were automatically merged, and the only way to create two lots now would be through a, a. and the only way to create two lots now would be through, uh, an act of subdivision. So it would have to go through the planning commission, be subdivided. Uh, because you would be creating, uh, nonconforming lots, it would have to come to you for dimensional ve- variances, uh, and a special use permit to create a nonconforming lot.
Despite the fact that they had previously been?
And this was done in nineteen?
In nineteen seventy-five, when they were purchased?
It was under common ownership when the ordinance went into effect.
But it wasn't in common ownership when it was purchased in the fifties.
It doesn't matter, it was under common ownership when the ordinance went into effect. That's what the ordinance says.
So if they were merged, then why wasn't the, you know, why wasn't the tax bill merged? Why wasn't, uh, you know, why weren't, why wasn't the address merged with Pembroke Lane? Why, you know, why are, why are we still taxing them on two separate pieces of property?
I don't work for the tax assessor's office, I can't answer that question.
I can tell you from memory that we've had this come before us in the past.
I know.
And the same thing happens. The, the unlikely people that own the land don't realize that the two lots they have are now one. Like you said, you're, you're still getting two tax bills, even if they, even if you got a piece of paper and said, oh, by the way, we're gonna merge, we're gonna merge a lot. So that didn't happen, didn't happen in anybody's cases. They just kept collecting the money. They're gonna collect the money anyways, you, if you merge it together, obviously the, um, ten Pembroke would have gone up exponentially with, you know, because it's, it's a giant lot. But she didn't even know that. What are we looking to do here is just to break, break the lots up, that's what you're looking to do, so she can sell it. And then what, once she sells it, the buyer, say I wanted to buy it, then I would have to go through the planning board, because it's nonconforming. Well, I, I think you could, uh, you could build a, a home that, that would fit within the setbacks and variance.
Correct.
And avoid that process, but, and any variances would bring them back. But right now, she's unable to sell that lot. That's correct. And that's what we're trying to solve here tonight. I'm just trying to get, I'm trying to get my hands around what's going on. That's exactly right. You can't, you can't sell the, uh, house, and you can't sell the lot.
Okay, I'd love to know a couple things. The tax bill is not, the, the tax assessment is not the legal determination of title or lot lines or anything, just for, solely for the purpose of collecting and assessing taxes. Secondly, ever since I started practicing law, the first thing I learned was, you've got two adjacent lots in common ownership that are substandard, do not put them in the same name. Even putting a middle initial, and there are cases on it. You put a middle initial on somebody's name, vary the spelling, it's enough, not enough to merge.
Well, apparently.
With all due respect, that's great, but nobody knows this stuff.
Yeah, if they didn't know this.
Ignorance of the law is not an excuse. You have a lawyer.
Well, you can change the rules, and they pay the consequences. And you didn't tell them.
No, they passed a zoning law.
But how were they supposed to know?
Yeah, but they didn't, but, but, when I, listen, I'm not being unadmitted, I'm just trying, they didn't, her parents didn't know that. The people that had come before me didn't know those things.
Right.
Come before us, it's not.
You can say I, you could say that about anything.
I think it's horrible that they have to, they have to do this, with all due respect. I mean, Mr. Cronin's getting paid to be here tonight, and it shouldn't have been this hard.
Well, somebody enacted a merger provision in our ordinance.
Yep, and they're not here anymore, so. They're, they're stuck, well, where do we go from here, Mr. Chairman?
Well, you can say that the tax records are not, but I'm sorry, the common layperson will look at that tax record and say, if I'm, have a separate lot here and a separate tax, a common layperson, the only reason why I may know about it is because sitting on this board. Other than that, nobody else would know that unless I was attorney. And not everybody who owns property is an attorney. So I, I feel that it's, you know, I, I feel the lot should be able to be separated.
And, and I'm, I'm afraid that this board does not have that authority.
We've done it in the past, we've done it in the past.
So why are they here?
I, yeah, if you've done it in the past, then I would question the re, the legality of that action. Only the planning commission has legal authority to subdivide property.
With all due respect, Brian, why are they here?
I, I didn't bring them in, I, that question should be directed to Mr. Cronin.
Right, but my problem is, I don't care who it is out there, if they're being taxed individually for each lot, it is up to the town to say, get together with the tax assessor and everything else and put this, and this is not the first time, put this article to bed and, and solve this problem, and you know all, and they come up with a letter saying, gee, we notified this person that this happened in such and such a time, and they didn't do nothing about it. I feel it's an obligation of the town, I'm sorry.
No, not, and not only that, I mean, that other, the Lot sixty-six is, you know, they're being taxed on as, as a buildable lot. If, if, if the lots had been merged with Pembroke Lane, then that land would have been, would have been, uh, subject to, uh, uh, senior discounts, tax frees, you know, all of those are the benefits that, that elderly people in this town can, can avail themselves of. So if that land had been, you know, if they, if they knew that they were merged together, and now they're considered one lot, I, I know, I think it's kind of unfair that they've been taxed as a buildable lot, when.
It's not.
It's not.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Cronin. Does this board even have jurisdiction to create two separate lots? I mean, it sounds like you'd go to the planning.
I, I disagree with the premise of your question. There are two lots. There's no, there's no question that there are two lots. There, there's been, and, and a determination by the zoning officials and the town economy, that those lots are merged by operation of law. But, and, but if, what exists right now, a two lots, and the town has taken no action to merge them, they're not merged. I mean, they, there's a question of whether they're merged right now, it certainly is blocking whatever action, my clients might want to take with regards to these two lots, but there are two lots, there are two legal lots there. Subdivided, recorded, proved subdivisions. I mean, uh, there's, you know, so I, I disagree that there, there's only one lot there, and we're trying to separate that. There, there's two lots, and I'm trying to preserve Lot sixty-six.
Why, why do you say it goes to planning?
Because the merger provision is, is automatic, shall be considered to be an undivided parcel of land. This is an undivided parcel of land.
I'd say it's already divided.
We've, we've seen, we've seen, um, administrative subdivisions done in the past. Since these, since these lots were already subdivided back in nineteen seventy-five, prior to the merger law.
It doesn't, this, the, if, the, the, based on this ordinance, these two parcels have become an undivided parcel of land. An administrative subdivision does not apply because an administrative subdivision cannot create new lots.
So therefore, the Town of Coventry owes these people since nineteen fifty the excessive amount of tax they've paid.
Uh, uh, they may, they may have a cause of action.
What do you mean may? I would think definitely. If, if one doesn't, you know, this is like the right hand not knowing what the left hand's doing.
That happens all the time.
Well, yeah, but it shouldn't, this is something that the town has knowledge of. We've brought it to their attention many times. Well, and if they don't take action, that's the same thing as you're saying, they're not taking action. These people, the laypeople, didn't take action back in eighty-one or seventy-five, nor has the town. So I can't see why the individual would have to be penalized for a fault of the town.
How we fix this?
Well, let me, let me find out first if you even have jurisdiction to grant.
I think point blankly, uh, that if we've done it in the past, we have the jurisdiction, we've set the precedent. Oh, quite a, quite a number of times.
The address was on Center Street, up on top of Depot Hill.
No, I don't, wait, let me do a little, I know you're anxious to right a wrong.
Well, for one reason, I'm not gonna be here next month. And we're gonna have a problem with the court. So I'd like to vote on this tonight.
Vote on what?
Disappeal.
Well, you, if, so long as everybody else is here, you still have five members.
Well, that's if everybody else is here.
Right.
You know?
I, I, I really think you ought to allow the solicitor to do her research and give you advice as to whether the action that you're contemplating is legal.
Well, I'm, I'm saying I'm contemplating whether it's legal on the way that town ha, has handled it in the past and currently, if they hadn't addressed to.
But there's been cases on mergers since then. There, I know you're anxious to make this right, and, and I'm sure the town is anxious to make it right too. It's just you've got to go about it the right way. Otherwise, you're, um, you know, you're not doing any good.
I know, it's just that we're gonna put these people through more expense. You know, if they have to go back before planning to have everything subdivided again, that's another expense they're gonna have to incur. I mean, they've already done it once.
They didn't do it, it was done in nineteen fifty-four, this comes up.
They subdivided in nineteen seventy-five, you said.
It was, it was two separate, uh, subdivisions, they didn't, they didn't do it. A developer, one developer developed a cave-in, different developer built. As much as I would like to do something tonight, I have no problem in giving Jane a month to kind of find out, you know, where our legal footing is. Certainly don't wanna.
But then, that I have run in the past where, isn't an opinion. And not to buy it. I'll be honest with you, we've had several different attorneys up here, and I've had the same different, I've had same case with different opinions each and every time. And I believe that the board, as a member and laypeople, do have to look at it as a judicial system with the, uh, you know, uh, honesty, integrity that is brought here. And I feel that, you know, from past experience, and also my forty years and over sitting on this board, that we've been able to rectify these problems. And it's the only solution that the residents of the Town of Coventry have to bring this to us. They don't have any other solution. And this is the only solution they have.
Well, no, actually, they do have a solution, and that is to go to the planning commission and attempt to resubdivide the lot. And that's the appropriate means of creating two lots where only one currently exists.
Again, I, I, that's, I believe is a strictly an opinion. And I'm getting, you know, like I said, in the, in the past forty years, my experience, and it's over that.
I don't know that you have the jurisdiction to undo mergers, that may be Superior Court.
Well, that would be the town's right to overrule this board and take it to the Superior Court. I agree, they could do that. But that would be underneath the town jurisdiction.
Well, we have done it in the past.
That's what I'm saying, we have done it in the past, so we can, we can do it. And, uh, I think it's a wrong, that has to be corrected, that never should have been done. And I agree with, you know, with this idea that, you know, we're not doing it to, you know, according to the state rules and regulations.
I just don't understand why they're here.
Yeah.
You look at me to answer that question, I can't answer that question.
You did answer that question?
I can't answer that question.
It just makes no sense.
Okay, at this time here.
The, the, the reason is because somebody asked me if, if they, if it was a buildable lot, and I issued an opinion that it was not because it was merged.
Correct.
And, and a P, a decision of a zoning official is appealable to this board.
Correct.
When actually.
So it does blow the first.
Because of the situation, now it's out of the plan.
Yeah, now it makes sense.
Right.
So I mean, that was your, and, and you had the correct saying, gee, I don't know if I could just administratively do this, and it would have to be, go to the board. And I feel the board has a right to vote on this, and I will, first of all, I'm gonna ask if, does anybody here would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anybody who'd like to have a question on this application? Or have, or wish to approve, uh, opinion on this application? Okay, I see nobody would like to speak on this application. So now, at this time here, I'd like the discussion to go to the board. How do you feel on this, Keith?
I think it's unjust, and I think that they put the property owners at a hardship, and, and I'd like to undo it.
Correct. All right, how do you feel on it?
I agree with Keith.
Denise?
I agree with Keith, I wanna undo it, but I also wanna make it so that the owners of this property, of these properties, whatever we do, doesn't come back on them, that now, you know, somebody takes them to court or something. I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea of waiting for more information from Jane, but I think, I think in the abundance of, of caution, I think maybe getting some more information, that way it doesn't come back to bite this lady in the.
But that would be up to the town to take it to Superior Court.
Well, that's not beyond the realm of possibility.
No, it's not, I'm not disagreeing with that.
The town's not gonna appeal its decision of its own accord.
The town really can't appeal its own decision.
Right.
But you lacked this, you lacked jurisdiction to make the decision you're trying to make.
You may make a decision.
It may be invalid.
It's not binding.
I hate to say this, but we really need to get some.
I need something with some teeth in it, so that, that says we can do something about this.
We do, but it's null and void, why create more issues for the people, in my opinion.
Russ?
I'm inclined to agree with Denise and Eddie on that part.
Okay, at this time here, Mr. Cronin?
Yes?
If you were to go in front of, well, wait, another month, for a, but it's a legal opinion, how do I get something in writing? I mean, this is in writing, right in front of me. I don't.
You've got your town planner telling you that you don't have jurisdiction to undo a merger.
No, I don't have the town planner.
Well, you have the assistant town planner. But it's me telling you that I want to do more research and confer with other members of my firm before I tell you that you can do this.
What's their plan of action if we have no authority, go back to planning?
Yeah, they have to go to plan.
And then divide the lots.
And that, I've seen it too, where they go to plan, and they say, look, it's all measured out, it's perfect, and we just have a subdivision.
I, I would, uh, I, I apologize, but I, I would interject that, that more than likely, uh, we will go to Superior Court. Because as this board has correctly pointed out, um, there are thousands of dollars, tax dollars, owed to these people. No matter the outcome. And to collect that money, we would have to pursue this matter to Superior Court.
See, and I think that's putting an undue burden on the taxpayer.
But that's, you may have to go to Superior Court to undo the merger.
Agreed, agreed.
And?
Yeah, I, I, I do, I, I'm agreeing that Superior Court is the, uh, more likely avenue. Because of the monetary aspect.
Well, that's, you know, people pay their tax bill.
Yeah. Well, I had an interesting case with your office, and I know that I'm limited to ten years. There is a statute of limitations, I can't get all fifty years.
See, that's an undue fear penalty too. You know? And it's from, again, the town negligence.
It comes, this comes up all the time. It's the, the merger is a, is a really tough thing.
Well, not only the merger, but I disagree, and I'm gonna be honest, I'll put it right on the record, that lot owners of anything, and when they change zoning, they are not notified.
They are.
They, they are notified, that, that, that's what the. They, they are notified, that, that's what the public advertising and the mail notice and all of that is for.
But the individual that owns that lot is not notified.
They are, they are notified by the public advertisements that are-
Public advertisement and the Newport Times, Coventry doesn't do anything.
I, I'm, I'm telling you that this is what the, the courts recognize. When, when the, the town passes an ordinance and advertises it in the paper that they are considering a new ordinance, that is public notice, and the members of the public are deemed to be aware of it.
I think it's such an important thing that the individual should be notified directly and not just saying Article twenty-four, exactly what's being done. See, because most layperson would not know what Article twenty-four is. Okay, um, I'm gonna put it up to the board if they'd like to vote, have, does somebody like to make a motion, we vote on this tonight? On this appeal. It only requires four out of the five votes, doesn't re, I mean, it doesn't, only requires three out of the five votes to be approved. Do anybody who'd like to make a motion? Okay, I see nobody wishes to make a motion on this. I would like to have a motion made that we continue this to next month, so that we may obtain greater information.
So moved, second.
You're making the motion, that's been seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, nay, one nay. Okay, um-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make a request? The, um, the opinion that shared with the board, if, if I could have access to that information prior to the meeting?
I would think so, that'd be, that'd be correct.
Make a more informed, uh, response to the board.
I agree, so that-
Yeah, I'm happy to, and it may save you time, and maybe you just wanna go straight to Superior Court if you're looking that way.
Uh, Mr. President, I can't, because I do have the administrative finality, uh, required.
Docent of administration, huh?
Yeah.
Right, I know, but you may say that you can withdraw your, you can withdraw your application, your appeal.
I agree on that, so I, we show-
The date of my letter, uh, to the town, seven months ago.
Seven months ago?
Seven months ago.
And we're just hearing this now?
Initial rejection was prior to that.
I didn't know that.
This is not a speediest. Alright, um-
Not that you have a crystal ball, but is there, where do you see this possibly going? You don't think this could be handled by, by the planning board to change something?
I think, uh, I think the course of least resistance is to go to the planning board with, uh, with this plats that are all laid out, with survey lines, have a surveyor certified, these are the lines, this is an accurate survey, uh, and have hearing with the planning board, and you have a sub, have your subdivision at that point, I think they can give-
Uh, I'd be back before the zoning board-
Because it's not-
On a minor without street creation, uh, with non-conforming laws.
Right.
Yeah, and then back to the plans.
So do we do, make this more speedy, direct this right to the planning board of review?
We have to have an application before you can actually do it.
What if I have the town make up the application?
If, this is a hard, um, you can't do it for them, they have to do it themselves.
Well, the town can make up the application and submit it to their own board, yes, I believe they can, right. So I wish at this time, if the board sees so, to make, have the town make up an application for this, unless the applicant would rather do it himself.
I would.
That's what I kinda thought.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, does this matter continue, uh, to the date of the, the next-
Zoning board.
Zoning board, Harry, what is that date?
April first.
April?
Certain, so that we don't have to re-advertise.
April first, first, twenty twenty seven.
Twenty twenty seven P M.
Alright, but I have to have, I gotta vote on a motion to do that.
Okay.
Alright, so at this time, do I have a motion, or we continue this appeal-
Seconded.
To April first, two thousand and twenty. Okay, motion's made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, nays, or rather, any nays, ayes have it. Okay, we have another appeal tonight in front of us.
The next matter on the agenda is Inre, Inre Peter Rodolowitz, AP twenty-two, Lot two-two-three-point-oh-oh-one, thirty Beechwood Street, Notice of Violation dated January seventh, two thousand, an error, twenty twenty, alleging a failure to maintain such premises in reasonably clean and orderly manner into a standard conforming to the other orderly premises in the neighborhood per chapter one eighty-seven of the Coventry General Code.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this is on good, I know we were gonna be so late, I went to talk to everybody, um, you know who I am? I'm Trish Karloff, and-
And your address is?
Um, it's seventy-seven Dorance and Providence.
Okay.
Uh, Peter Rodolowitz, you see it, Peter Rodolowitz.
Please give your full name and address.
Peter Rodolowitz, thirty Beechwood Street.
Coventry, Rhode Island.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both stand up, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Please present your appeal.
I would like to, um, thank all of you for your time and your consideration, and also giving of your, uh, evenings. Um, I know Mr. Rodolowitz is about ready to fall asleep, because he's up before the crack of dawn, um, so, thank you all. Um, I just wanna indicate to the, to the board that, uh, Mr. Rodolowitz, you probably describe him as a rugged individualist. He's the type of person that would rather go cut down a tree, take his chainsaw, use his splitter, um, he has a wood stove, uh, he burns his own wood, he'd rather do that and paint national grid, or Wesco Oil, um, for his home. Um, you could say that his yard matches his personality, his rugged individualism. He's a construction worker, and as I indicated, he was up early this morning, he, he gets up early every day, works all day. Um, so, his work involves bringing home materials, tools, power tools, uh, ladders, comes home, it's dark, you know, he may leave some things in the yard, weekends, tries to spend his time cleaning up the yard. Um, he has a fenced-in yard, uh, he has trees, shrubs that surround it, so anything that's actually in the yard itself is not visible from the street, you have to actually be in the yard to be able to see those things. Now, um, I don't know if you have the photographs, do they have the photographs for me? Uh, which photographs? Photographs that you took? Yes. Okay, alright, so there were photographs that were taken, um, of Mr. Rodolowitz's yard, um, and I'd like to indicate that he, um, is not a lazy individual, he's the type of person that's always going, always moving, um, and from the initial letter that you sent, and I know you indicated that you did not see any significant progress, he's out there on a regular basis cleaning his yard, um, and I unfortunately didn't give the, the photographs to Mr. Wagner before this is, I'm sorry, my first time before this board, so I didn't realize that I had the ability to do that, so I apologize. But I do have on each one of the photographs where the items have been, have been removed, I only have one copy, I'd be allowed to approach the board.
Sure.
Um, so, maybe we can, I don't know, pass these around, I'm not sure everybody wanna handle this, but, for instance, uh, this is the initial photograph, and it shows a plastic bin and, uh, pieces of wood, and this shows that it's all been cleared up, it's all gone now, um, one of the items was, what's it called, missing one? Bobcat. Bobcat, that was in the front of the yard, uh, this shows that it's since been removed from that location. Uh, there was a beatable bench and a hammock that was in the yard, bench is gone, hammock is clear. I have, there were, I think it was a couple of lake jackets or some items that were on the ground, there's a photograph showing that they're gone. So, uh, I mean, I can go through this one by one.
When was this done, recently?
Recently, yes, recently, uh, the last couple of weekends, most of this was done, there was, there was corrective action all along. Um, this is, there was, I don't know, some car part, something in the bush, and that's been removed, uh, there were complaints about-
I, I just wanna, what are these photographs, who took them? And, uh-
Mr. Rodolowitz took the photographs of his yard, and if you want, uh, Mr. Rodolowitz, uh, these items that I'm presenting to the board, do they fairly and accurately depict, uh, your yard at the current time?
Yes, they do.
And, for instance, this photograph that they're showing of this trailer that was in your yard, is that right?
That's correct, and it's been removed since.
Alright, and this is the location where it was?
That's correct.
And it's no longer in that location, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, now you su- submitted a picture of the bobcat, correct?
Yes.
You said that's been removed.
Well, it's been relocated, the problem was, I guess, they indicated that it was in the front of the yard, he uses it regularly, he uses it to push leaves, he uses it for wood.
He uses it for snow plowing, and I have a gate there accessible to the street, and that's why it was in the front, in case it snowed or anything, but I moved it into the backyard.
So, I would argue, and I don't know-
And I, I have a bobcat, and I have, um, I have an ATV, she questioned me on that, they both are registered. Uh, the ATV is obviously registered in, uh, Massachusetts, because Rhode Island doesn't allow it. Uh, the jet ski is registered for Johnson's Pond in Rhode Island.
So, significant steps have been made for the corrective action, so what we're asking for today, that, um, the initial violation, uh, be dismissed, and that the court find, or the, the board find, um, that he's in compliance, and that, uh, no fines be imposed, please.
Okay, this started in two thousand and nine, this is two thousand and twenty.
I'm sorry, it started in two thousand and-
Two thousand and nine.
No, that was with, uh, someone else that was, Mr. Peabody, and I straightened all that out.
So this is not something that, and it's been, notices sent to you, I got two thousand and ten, I mean, this has been going on for some time.
No, no, Mr. Mr. Peabody cleared me of all the violations that I had. He sent me a letter, and I took care of everything, I called him.
Wait, I, I cannot hear the solicitor, because he, he was speaking, so, for you, for people, you said, I'm sorry. Are you, are you done with your case? Are, are you presented all your evidence?
N- no, no, um, but, uh, this is the first time hearing of this, two thousand and nine, uh, maybe there was something that happened back then, but the first time that, um, the zoning officer came to his house, and the first letter that was received by Mr. Rodolowitz was August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, so, anything that happened previously would be irrelevant and has nothing to do with these proceedings whatsoever. The first notice of or that Mr. Rodolowitz was received was August twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, um, and in response, I indicated that I was representing him, I also requested, um, copies of any written complaints. To this day, I haven't received copies of any written complaints, I happened to actually go online today, and I'm sure you're all familiar with this, it's a zoning complaint, so if there's a neighbor that had a problem with what Mr. Rodolowitz had in his yard, I would think there would be some written complaints, if there's no complaint, I, I don't know why we're all standing here wasting our time.
Okay, are you finished?
Up to the moment, yes.
Okay.
Why don't we hear from the, uh, zoning official about, uh, what she has for, for her notice of violation?
Um, in the end of June, the, oh, I need to be sworn in.
Okay, give your full name and address?
She needs to write you in the right name.
Oh, sorry, late night, Kerry Kawaski, sixteen seventy-five Flat River Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
And you're, uh, acting in his capacity of-
Zoning enforcement official.
Please?
Zoning enforcement official.
Okay, for the Town of Coventry.
Yes.
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
The end of June, uh, Acting Interim Director Russell Crossman received several complaints with regard to the state of the property located at thirty Beechwood. Russell, um, informed me that he had received the complaints and asked me to take a ride out there to check it out.
All right, now, Russell who?
Russell Crossman.
The town planner?
At the time, he was the interim director of planning.
Okay.
Um, so I went out there, um, took, you know, took a look and saw that it was in disarray. Um, so on July third, I sent a letter to Mr. Rodolowitz saying, you know, he had two weeks to clean up the property or to contact me, so on and so forth. Um, on the sixteenth of July, I did another drive-by inspection, and there was little to no progress, um, that had been made. At some point between the sixteenth of July and the fourteenth of August, Mr. Rodolowitz reached out to me, um, and insisted that I meet him at his property and show him, um, what I was referring to as far as junk and debris. And, um, so therefore, I went out there, that's when I took the pictures on the fourteenth. Um, and then he requested that I send him a detailed letter of my findings with specific instructions on what was to be removed. That letter was sent out on the twenty-sixth, along with, um, the detailed instructions on what had to be cleaned up, what had to be removed, what my findings were. September twelfth, I received a letter from Attorney Lockaby, um, informing me that she represented Mr. Rodolowitz. Um, she was requesting information as far as written complaints, telephone conversations, um, and anything I had in writing with regard to the complaints. I did not have anything because it was forwarded to me from Mr. Crossman. In October, I responded to Attorney Lockaby, um, stating I did not have any written complaints or telephone logs or any of the information she was seeking. However, I did send her a copy of the photographs that I had taken on the fourteenth of August, um, showing what the issues were.
That was two thou, that was-
That is two thousand and nineteen.
Nineteen, so-
Yep, so, um, on the fifth of November, um, I had done a re, I had done another inspection just to see if any progress had been made, I hadn't heard from anybody. I mailed out letters to Attorney Lockaby and Mr. Rodolowitz, requesting an update as to the status of this cleanup. Um, the letters were returned to me unclaimed, however, one of the letters, um, without any tracking information, was never received back. So, in January, um, and then, and I just wanna state that that did take a while for these letters.
Oh, this is two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, November. Um, January seventh, I performed another inspection, um, and again, I still hadn't heard back from Attorney Lockaby. And after I performed the inspection, January seventh, I issued a notice of violation. Which, then, on the twenty-eighth of January this current year, I received an appeal from Attorney Lockaby on behalf of Mr. Rodolowitz.
Okay, now, my records here show two thousand and nine.
Yes, from Jake Peabody.
You have a letter dated from, uh, uh-
Do you have, uh, those letters that you referenced in your testimony, do you have copies of those?
Yes.
Have they been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And they are two copies, so what you sent out to Mr. Rodolowitz?
Rodolowitz, yes.
And you are asking that they be admitted in full?
Yeah.
For the board to consider in their decision?
Yes, please.
Okay, no problem, this-
Will you admit them in full?
I will admit them in full.
Okay, and then, there's some photographs that have been offered as well, uh, that, did you take those photographs?
I did.
Are they a true and accurate representation of the property on the date it's taken?
Yes.
Are there notes on those photographs as to when they were taken?
Uh, some of them, yes.
Okay, can you just tell the board when you took the photographs and what they're different?
Um, okay, so, the photographs towards the back of my packet, um, were attached to a letter on the August twenty-sixth. These photographs were taken on August fourteenth- These photographs were taken on August fourteenth when I did a walkthrough inspection with Mr. Rodalowicz.
Oh, so he was with you when you took these pictures?
Correct.
Okay.
So, can I ask you, what provision of the zoning ordinance did he violate that prompted that notice of violation?
There's, uh, multiple vehicles on the property. There's mu- multiple piles of junk and debris, um, some which are located right up against his property lines.
So, is it section one eighty-seven property maintenance that you're saying he's violated?
Yes.
Okay. And so, do you all have a copy of this?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so, can you explain in the photographs what it is that is in violation of this particular?
Can I, can I get, can I move back a little bit, though?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Crossman, uh, gave a referral to Ms. Kowalski, uh, about an issue at thirty Beechwood, okay? What, what paperwork or what complaints did Mr. Crossman receive in order to forward that information to Ms. Kowalski? What written complaints did he get that prompted this thing?
So, to the best of my knowledge, he hadn't received any written complaints. It was what I believe to be phone calls.
Okay, did he give you a list of who the phone call complainants were?
No.
Okay. Alright. Go ahead, please.
Alright, so why don't you explain what these, how these photographs show?
Um, so the photographs show multiple, um, piles of wood. There's trash cans, is what appears to be a lawnmower part. Uh, there's pieces of metal, maybe perhaps a couple of pieces of, uh, some sort of building or something. It's a little hard to tell. Uh, I have stacks of tires, full of fence, a propane tank. Uh, as you can see, there's one, two, three, four different vehicles in this picture. Some that appear to be unregistered, um, over here some more junk and debris, um, more car parts, the trailer.
Now, what is it going back to that picture? What is the, is canvases or something up there? Are those buildings? What are they?
Uh, that appears to be some sort of a carport, which is also right directly, um, on the carport line. If you look at where this fence is and the, uh, piece of the carport, they seem to be like literally right on the-
No, those so-called carports, what are they made of? What, what is that?
Metal and canvas is what it appears to be with, um, some tarps.
Is the canvas or whatever that is all ripped and torn?
It's a shelter logic if I can explain, sorry.
Is that all ripped and torn?
Yes.
Alright, so that's just flapping in the breeze, just-
Correct.
Okay. Have you been there recently?
Um, I went by today. There's a memo attached to some pictures that was left out for you, um.
Can you go back to the photos and explain each one?
What?
All the cars and stuff are still there.
There's, um, yeah, I mean, there's the Corvette, there's a skid steer. This is now out in the front of the road. Um, and it appears that, the driveway does appear to be, and what cleaned up, however, it now appears that majority of those materials have then now moved over to the side of the yard, um, as you can tell by the larger stack of wood.
I, I don't understand. Can you explain this?
So, these are today's pictures. I went out there at eleven o'clock this morning, um, just because they had stated everything had been cleaned up. Uh, as you can see, the green park is now missing, it's kind of moved back over here. Uh, the driveway is a little more wider now, um, and everything's kind of moved back or piled. Uh, there appears to be more, um, car parts in the carport. It's, I don't believe based on that vehicle that has the Jeep Cherokee anymore. This is the side property line that encroaches right up to the fence. There's more junk and debris piled here. Um, this, the, uh, Brian, can you just go back one second? So, the rotella, um, is at the left side of the driveway. This is, um, again, the front part. This is when you drive, this is actually the backside of the shed right here, and this is from the side street. Um, like a swing or something, maybe a perhaps a grill, the hammock, it's more, uh, there's the jet ski.
Where's the jet ski?
Right here.
I can't even see it.
So, he's moved stuff around, basically?
Correct.
Looks new. How many unregistered vehicles are there in the lot?
Uh, I believe there was four or five.
Okay. Jane, do you have any other questions?
So, that's a fair and accurate, you took those pictures today?
I did.
Okay, and that's what it looked like today?
Yes.
So, just explain how, uh, to the board, how, how does this vi- violate the ordinances of Coventry specifically?
Uh, you're supposed to make a great big effort to keep your property neat and orderly. This obviously does not appear to be somewhat neat and orderly, as everything is kind of piled up. I mean, the person that lives right here, this is what they say pulling in and out of their driveway. Um, you know, you have your, your jet ski, your grill, your, you know, all this wood, car parts and stuff. Can you go back to the last of the pictures? What are you pointing to?
Please speak up.
What are you pointing to here?
Um, this?
Yes.
So, that's the backside of the shed?
Okay, so that's his neighbor to the right?
No, that's it.
The neighbor to the right would be over here.
Right to the, over the right corner of the lot.
So, so here's the road right here. So, his neighbor's house is right in here. This is in the back, would be the backside of the shed.
That, that's exposed to the neighbor, correct?
Only when he gets out to the street. Right? So, when he pulls out of his driveway and he turns, he turns right to drive by the property, he sees it in the man's backyard.
Right. But, actually, that's the side front yard.
Side front yard, okay.
Now, there's one house right next to it that looks right over everything. Where's the picture of that? You just-
The gray house?
The gray house.
So, uh-
You go back?
Is actually right here, um, and it faces the street.
Alright, but go back another set of pictures. Okay, you can see it right down on the lower, lower left, that's correct. Is that the house neigh- next door neighbor's house?
Yep.
So, that's what the next door neighbor has to look at?
Yes. As well as people across the street.
Alright.
Yeah, can I just indicate, there's a, there's a fence there.
There's a three-section, six-foot stockade fence that I put up for my neighbor in, just recently, last summer. Uh, actually, there's always been one, but I just put a brand-new set, three sections up there. He's a great friend.
So, those items there are behind the stockade fence?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, this is, uh, to the right of his driveway.
And that's all-
Okay.
That's all firewood that's, I'm burning through, and it's just about depleted.
May I speak?
Sure.
Okay, um, some of Ms. Kowalski's timeline is incorrect. Um, she may have come out to Mr. Rodalowicz's home in the summertime. And he did ask her for a detailed, uh, letter, and that's when she sent us the letter of August twenty-sixth. Um, and she said that, uh, the skid steer, steer with the tarp, ATV, plastic bins, wood, metal pieces, a lot of these items, after she gave us this letter, uh, were removed from the premises. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, so, after she sent you this letter-
So, you're saying the bobcat, ATVs, all been removed from the premises?
Um, from where they were located, where she asked me to move them.
Oh, so they've only been shuffled around on the premises?
I, I mean, I, everybody has jet skis and ATVs in their yard to some degree. And like I said, mine are, mine are registered.
His point is that even after he received this initial letter, he didn't ignore the letter. He took corrective steps at that point. And then, we didn't hear again from Ms. Kowalski until January of twenty twenty. So, the first letter was August twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen. The second notice was the order of the violation, um, and that was not until January of twenty twenty. So, there's been two correspondence. Maybe something got returned? I, I don't know. Uh, I can't claim to have received something that was returned. It doesn't make sense to me. And at this point, I still haven't heard of any person that was actually complaining about the premises. Maybe there is someone, I, I don't know. But I think Mr. Rodalowicz has put in many, many, many hours to try and take corrective steps. Um, and we actually have photographs of other properties in the vicinity. One with probably forty paint cans, tires. I have a Jeep that's been there for several years.
We're keeping a, this here appeal is to this property, not to anything else.
I understand that, but if I could read to you the, the statute that Ms. Kowalski is indicating that Mr. Rodalowicz is violating, it says, "to maintain the premises in a reasonably clean and orderly manner to a standard conforming to other properties in the neighborhood." So, the other properties in the neighborhood are relevant to the violation of this ordinance.
I agree.
So, it specifically states in here, "conforming to the other properties in the area." So, I would have to say that his property is in conformity with other properties in the neighborhood.
That's your opinion, and it's a wrong opinion. My forty years plus experience on this board, that is atrocious. That is terrible. I would not want to live next to that, and I don't think you'd want to live next to it.
I don't want to.
Well, I'll let everybody speak. So, I'm just telling you point-blankly right now, that is not what I would want as a neighbor. Maintained, and I don't think your office, I'll go visit, see if you've got anything that looks like that near your office.
Doesn't look like that anymore.
I went there Tuesday, and I saw the-
Well, if you go there tomorrow, you'll have a different view.
And I saw another gentleman across the street cleaning up his yard, doing it, and nothing in that area looks like what you have there.
Well, then you need to go down a couple of streets.
Well, I'm looking at what's right around your house. I feel sorry for that person right there in that gray house that has to look over every single day at that. Now, I will not ask anymore from you.
He actually offered to come here this evening to testify to indicate that he was in support of Mr. Rodalowicz. We spoke with him over the weekend.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, is there anything else a board member would like to add to this?
I am gonna say that I am not a fan of anonymous complaints. If you feel strongly enough about something that's going on in your neighborhood, you call up, you read your name, you say, "can you please send somebody down to take a look at this?" Anonymous tips, I, I just, I don't, I don't like them, and I-
I don't disagree with you, but I'll be the anonymous tip. I would not want that next to my house.
Can I ask another question, that please?
If-
I think the goal here is probably to get the property, um, to a point that would please the board, right?
Correct.
I mean, and he's put numerous hours in the cold weather, freezing cold weather. He can show you his hands, he's all full of cuts and everything from-
Yes, but this has been hap- this has been going on for years. This is not something that's just hap-
This is, yeah, we're only, yeah, I'm just saying. We're only dealing with what she's got in front of her from August. Anything that happened with Jake was in the past and allegedly was resolved with Jake before he left.
Yes, it would, yes, it would, so I'd be fined.
Sir, do you have anything in writing that Jake resolved, you would?
I, obviously, I would have been fined since then. Since two thousand and nine, I would have received the fine if I did straighten this out with Mr. Jacob Peabody.
Not necessarily.
Oh, no? Okay, then.
Okay.
I was just, uh-
Hold them discussion here, alright.
I want to know how to keep it matter, uh, the pictures that she showed today and the previous, they're going to be admitted in full as-
Yes, evidence.
How about the ones, how about the ones that Ms. Lockaby submitted, the what, what it was before and was-
We're just allowed to ask that those be admitted in full, please.
Thank you.
We need, uh, so, you have testified, you have testified, and I hear a good place.
Mr. Rodalowicz already testified to that fact. I'm sorry? Mr. Rodalowicz took the photographs.
And when did you take the pictures?
Excuse me?
When did you take the pictures?
Um, two days ago.
Two days ago, okay.
Yep.
And I, I have more-
So, that'd be, uh, March, uh, second? You took these?
The first, I, first, I believe.
March first?
Monday, she took them on Monday, right?
Yep.
Monday. That'd be March second.
March second, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, they're a palantic exhibit one.
And then I would ask then that Mr. Rodalowicz, be, um, allowed to take further corrective action, then, you know, the, the board will be inclined to continue this matter so that, um, it could satisfy itself that everything is complete.
Alright, we will make a discussion. This time here, I'm gonna ask you both to take a seat. Will you take a seat in the audience, please?
Yes.
Okay, is anybody here would like to speak in opposition to this application? Please come up to the, the, uh, podium, or actually, the table. Please give your full name and address.
John Damian, seventeen Osseo Avenue, Coventry.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. Swear to tell truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Absolutely, Jim.
Okay. What would you like to bring up, sir?
First of all, um, I commend Peter, he hasn't been working all this weekend cleaning up the place.
Good.
Uh, I haven't seen the fires stop since, uh, Friday. Uh, I've moved in twenty-six months ago, and, um, there is no other property like Peter's in the neighborhood. It's exceptional. You don't believe me, the six of you that have not driven by there, check it out. My relatives wouldn't show me the property that I bought during the day. I wonder why that was. I, uh, have put together a collage, three exact similar collages. Pictures dated on my cell phone, that's where the collage came from, one week ago and two days ago. They show improvement by the way. If I may-
Sure.
Counselor.
Thank you, thank you.
They're the same ones. Um, I'm here for two specific reasons. First of all, nothing to do with, but, but that doesn't mean I'm not here for my, my neighbors as well. Uh, I'm no longer an anonymous, by the way. So, let's get that off the board. Let's get off, the other board is, these properties have ten feet of height difference. Mine is actually ten feet higher than his, and the gray house is ten feet higher than both of us. So, I can look over a six-foot fence all day long, and that's what these pictures show. In fact, one of the pictures I saw was this boot, this standing in front of my, my fence. I'm six foot, and the fence is six foot. That's what I see, not that, I see those pictures you're seeing there from the back. So, here's the two things. One, fire and pestilence. And two, I'm sorry, Peter, the property here, you didn't know. Fire and pestilence. I have two tires in my yard that come off of my vehicle every season. They're regular tires now, and in a month, they'll be my sore tires. How many of people on the board have twenty tires in their backyard? Anybody? Because I can stand on my fence and count twenty tires. You're looking for wherever they went. It went into the back of his place, face of mine. So, the other thing would be pestilence, and I'm not so much against the little, right, the little, uh, squirrels and so forth. It's the, it's the baby skunks that come across. When it snows, the tracks go in and out of his yard. Um, so, fire and pestilence, those tires gotta go. And the other one would be, Peter moved some of these heavy, heavy plate glass windows against what I believe to be his metal fence, which is right up against my wooden fence. Both the fences were there before, either one of them actually moved, and probably. But they're, they're, they're so, so heavy, they're, they're, they're the size of these windows, that they're actually breaking over my fence, and they have to be moved off. I, I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to tighten it up, and he did, he did just make it. I can say that Peter worked on his property all weekend. In fact, I, I seen him out there work. Going back to nine, uh, to two thousand and nine, all that stuff, I don't know. I was only here for twenty- Going back to night, uh, to two thousand and nine, all that stuff, I don't know, I was only here for twenty-six months. But the tires, and.
Same pictures?
The, uh, that issue has to be resolved today. So we really, uh, request counsel to resolve that issue today. If it can't be resolved, then I think what I'm, I'm just gonna do is walk across the street, talk to the, the fire chief at the station, and then work my way up that chain. These hu- these houses are, in, in the sign down the street states closely settled, uh, area. These houses are fifty feet apart, at most fifty-five, but I don't, I don't want the tires back there. The other thing is that you should be able to talk to your neighbors. Peter has been, I've met Peter twice, he's been very, um, uh, very, very nice from the start. I don't have a problem with that. But at fifty-nine years of age, living in multiple states, and has been my, in, in the service for ten years, I, I have an understanding of people's nature. Uh, Peter's been there for, what, two decades? I'm not gonna change Peter. I was waiting for this. And, uh, in respect to the other things, that's what you, that you do have to deal with, I don't see the front of the yard, but the tire's gonna go. And the plate glass window's gotta come off of the fence. And that's really all I have to say.
Board members have anything for this individual?
I just want to ask them, you took these photographs?
Um, most, most of them were a week ago and a few of them were yesterday.
So you're saying, what, can you date them one day?
Yeah, you can look on my phone if you want.
So they were, they were, they're a fair and accurate representation of what the property looked like about a week ago?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. We'll admit them as, as evidence.
So they'll put those in as, uh, town's exhibit two, because the first one, that packet of carry was all, were those photos?
Exhibit one.
And all in that packet that you gave the board your photos?
Yes, so that's all part of exhibit one, and this will be town's exhibit two.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for this individual? Okay, thank you very much for coming up here and, uh, you were the person who put in the original complaint?
Oh, no.
No?
No, I, I just have to get notified by the, uh, by the legislative, what you sent out.
Alright.
And last but not least, once again, Peter has made an effort in the last weekend.
Alright. Anybody else would like to speak on this application, for, against, or just have a question on it?
I, I just wanted to, uh, respond to a couple of things. Uh, we get a lot of telephone complaints. Um, we, unless people are willing to put a name to the complaint, we don't take anybody at their word. But we will go out and field, field verify to see if, if a violation does exist. There's nothing that requires us to have a written complaint to go investigate anything. And the absence of a written complaint does not mean that the violation does not exist. Uh, the zoning official is authorized to go out and, and find violations. If we had the time and resources, she could get in the car and drive around town and just randomly identify violations if she choo- chose to do that. Uh, w- we don't have to have a complaint to initiate, uh, an enforcement action.
I sat at this very bored and I complained about my neighbor putting up a six-foot fence on the street. Nobody came around and looked at that. So, no, I just, I, I understand your point and I understand she's got a job to do, but, I don't know. That's just me.
It's the same thing with pools. I mean, a lot of pools I drive by, they don't have fences that I, I, I presume, because it's such a safety issue.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Anybody else, okay. Would you like to add, ma'am?
Yes, Your Honor, um, I'm sorry, I'm so used to being in the car, Chair, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I know this is not the subject property, but, I mean, if you're talking hazardous.
I cannot take evidence on another piece of property, it's, it stays to this.
Well, no, well, no, she's got a point when she said that, you know, it, it, it's, it resembles other properties in the area.
No, because I could be taking the whole town in. I cannot do that. I can go over the whole town and I cannot do that.
She can submit that, you can give it whatever weight you want to.
Okay.
You don't have to consider it.
I mean, these are paint cans and it looks like some type of.
That's hazardous material, actually.
Right, which is also, as you brought up.
But we don't know that.
Paint cans being hazardous material?
You don't know what's inside the cans. Can you see that says paint cans?
So it's a paint, I mean, there are a number of.
I mean, you don't know what it is. It could be oil, it could be much worse. It could be anything, we just don't know what it is.
For what it is.
For what it's worth, okay.
This is around the corner, and you're talking about tires, there's all kinds of tires, um, and there are jet skis. So I move that those be marked as exhibits. Mr. Rodalowicz, you took those photographs?
Yes, I did.
And they're feeling accurate, you took those to neighborhood properties?
Yes, they are.
Alright, and you indicated earlier that you put numerous hours into corrective action, yes?
Yes.
And, uh, you agree that you will work with your neighbor to try and take whatever steps he's requesting?
I think that's very good, okay. Obviously, we realize that, I'm gonna be honest with you, the tops, that so-called tent you got the cars in, that's not an acceptable structure within the town anywhere.
It's a shelter lodge.
I don't care, it's not an acceptable structure. That should be removed. Alright? And point blankly, the, everything else there should be cleaned up in an orderly manner. Now, we have vehicles that are not registered there. Am I correct? Two of them. Okay, they should be removed. Alright?
He does have, um, a couple of collectible, collectible vehicles. He has a nineteen sixty-nine Mercury Cougar that he's.
If they're not registered, it doesn't make no difference. It's gotta be registered.
Wait, 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 it has to be off the street, right?
With, with all due respect to the board, there is an exemption in our town ordinance regarding junk vehicles for vehicles in excess of twenty-five years of age that are considered to be antiques or collectibles. So counsel is, is correct.
Okay, that's something I do not know.
Those vehicles are, um, exempt.
Those vehicles are, so anything over twenty-five years of age?
It's, it's a huge loophole, I agree, but that's what the ordinance says.
All the vehicles are over twenty-five years. Is that correct?
Okay, if that's the rule, that's the rule. And you're, then, I agree.
There's no limit to the quantity? Not in the ordinance. I, I, I agree with you, they probably need to update that and limit people to, um, what they can do. There, there is a limitation on cars that you are cannibalizing to, you know, if you have two cars and are using one to restore the other, you're limited to how long you can keep that car that you're dismantling, and you have to have a permit from the building inspector to do it. Uh, but.
How long does that permit usually go?
I think it's like six months. Um, but in terms of cars kept because they are antiques, there's no number limit, there's no, um.
Okay, they don't have to be registered?
No. Uh, now, on, on the other hand, if you have too many of those types of vehicles, you can still trip over this, uh, peace and good order portion of the, uh, ordinance that says you have to keep your, your property neat. So.
You're contradicting one with the other.
I, I'm saying that there are two separate requirements that can apply to the same thing.
My opinion is, uh, an old Falcon wagon is junk. Somebody else's opinion might be it's a collectible. Okay, so, and whether I got five of them lined up, um, you, you know, you're not, you know, so I can just leave, or this individual can leave anywhere and it's okay? Or does he have to have a orderly fashion? I mean, I, I don't get where you're coming off with, I really don't. And to give him a set of directions too, so he knows what's acceptable, to be fair to him. And again, I'm gonna be the next door neighbor that's gotta look at all this stuff.
Alright, so is there, is there, does the chair have a question?
Yes, what's acceptable?
Whatever you guys decide is acceptable, I, I mean.
But you're telling me he can have antique cars and he can have as many as he want, but then you're saying he can't? Like, I can't.
That's right, I think the statute is very vague and not very, um, doesn't give you a lot of direction. It's a very subjective statute.
I, I don't disagree with you.
So you're, you're here on his appeal of her notice of violation. So, um, if you think that there are certain parts of that notice of violation that cannot be upheld, you should strike them.
Well, I don't know.
But I, I think the point is, you can have a couple of antique cars in your yard and it doesn't violate this ordinance.
No, he's telling me I can have a dozen, or fifty of them.
Well, it depends on how you keep them. If you keep them in a nice enclosed garage, that's one thing, that's orderly. But if you have them strewn about your yard, the tarps on them and junk all over them, that's not orderly.
I might agree with you, but that's not what I'm being told.
That's, uh, she's saying exactly what I just said.
So it's how you do it.
Alright, so, and I recommend the individual on doing, starting to do a cleanup and the weather is getting much better. But I am looking at the pictures, I'm looking in front of me. Uh, all the stuff up against that fence like that, that's not acceptable.
In the back?
No, no, see the fence right in the front against that house, that's right by your driveway?
That's in his backyard.
No, that's in the front.
It's all clean, it's cleaned up, and you can't see that stuff on the street.
I took it from the street.
You shouldn't take that one from the street.
I went over there Tuesday and everything was really.
I don't know where you think I didn't take it from the street.
I spent the whole week, the whole weekend there, eight hours each day.
Right, but the problem we have here, and I, I know, and I, and you, right, and your neighbor was very good and everything else, but, and, and this is an objective opinion as your attorney is bringing up. What I think is neat and what. Exactly, that's what I'm saying. But the other problem is, you've gotta look at.
I'm not here to deface anybody's property mind.
That's what I'm saying, that's what, right, but right now, that's what you're doing, with the way the property looks.
If you go there tomorrow, it's a different story.
Okay, well, you know what, that's what I'm, that's all I can ask for, that's all I can ask for. So why don't, I, I would suggest to the board that we bring this back next month, or if you wanna do another month, make it two months.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go visit it, you know, again.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I, I planned on posting the front of that shed in, so you don't, you're not able to see inside yet, because it does house an antique car and it houses some car parts, so I don't want that to be seen from the street.
Right, but I'd like a, a much nicer look in, than just.
Like I said, I'm gonna put up doors and I'm gonna make it neat, so you're not looking at that, but I just needed some time to do so.
I agree, so if the.
And it's far as in the back?
Yep. Get rid of the.
I can put up a fence there so he doesn't have to look at that. It's in the back of my garage, I need someplace to store that stuff. I can put up a fence, he won't be able to see it.
But how about the tires, can you get rid of the tires? Are they something that's worth money?
Yes, they are. But like I said, I can put up a six-foot stocking fence in the back.
Right, but that's not gonna stop anything from, you know.
No, I mean, he won't have to look at that and it.
For safety, for safety. For safety reasons.
It's nothing, got anything to do with safety back there, no. Nobody plays back there, nobody goes back there, it's just a, a little storage piece that was out of the way, but obviously, there's a complaint about it and I'll straighten it out.
Okay.
How many tires do you have? Um, right there, probably like, like ten, I think like ten, ten where he can see them. But they're on rims, special rims that aren't just on tires. You understand that, like you say, nobody can play around with, but if somebody wanted to, if you went over there, you were doing some work, you might have cut, you'd be, might be using a cutting torch, a neighbor could, uh, drops. Having, uh, uh, a big pile of tires or, or combustibles in, in regards to like this wood does present a hazard in, in, you know, regards to the fire service and, and for, for public safety. You know, cleaning it up was, is something we're looking at doing. Looking at an aerial shot of your, your particular, uh, your lot, um, in the event that you had something that would emerge, you could have a car fire and take out the majority of everything that you own in that corner and then probably impede on, on your neighbor's house. Those are the things we look at. You've got three buildings that are right on your property line, which obviously were put up without permit, without coming before us because there's an ordinance for having stuff on the property line, unless it's been there since.
I, I, I was gonna mention that that, that structure, i- it appears to be an accessory structure in a side yard that goes right up to the property line.
We had people come before us to get those, and so, you know, you know right well that they have to get a permit for that.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not telling you didn't get permits, I'm just saying that it's, right now, that could never, you could never get that happening in town now.
Everything's gotta be brought up to code. Structures, the locations of them, it's gotta be brought up to code.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to stay the fine for sixty days, giving Mr. Rodalowicz more time to clean up his property and bring it up to standards that are gonna be acceptable for the zoning enforcement officer.
I do not disagree with you. How does the rest of the members feel on sixty days?
I agree.
Okay, okay. I would like to continue this and take a, look at it at sixty days. Yes, okay, let me just have this gentleman.
Uh, one more thing, Chairman, uh.
Wait, uh, what was your last name?
John.
Come all the way up, please.
Damian.
D A M, I am. And, um, all of you, you have permission for the next sixty days to come on my property, Seventeen Osseo Avenue, and look towards that property.
Thank you.
Behind him, where, was your house behind us?
According to that picture, I am to the right side, looking at the face view of my house, Seventeen Osseo is the first picture there. It shows, um, red arrows where I see his property.
See that number twenty-five is in the lower left corner?
Yes.
I think that's his house.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, I just want to add that an invoice was sent out to Mr. Rodalowicz on February tenth, um, just so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle for a hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty cents, which was the town's cost that it occurred when we mailed out the certified letters to the abutters in a two-hundred-foot radius. So, um, I would like some sort of an arrangement where we don't have to wait sixty days for that.
Well, I don't quite understand if the town is bringing a violation against Mr. Rodalowicz, why he would have to bear that cost.
I think that would have to be reviewed after the sixty days to let's give the individual the opportunity. I know he's already had the opportunities, had plenty of them, but I think.
He brought the appeal, he brought the appeal that necessitates.
Because the town had issued a violation against him, that's why he had to appeal.
Well, he brought an appeal, that's right, he has a, he has a right to appeal, that is true. But he also bears the responsibility of the cost of his appeal, which includes the cost of certified mail. That is a, a cost that is.
No, you're right, you're right.
Do we invoice everybody that files an appeal and that the town has to notify the abutters?
Um, they have a choice where they can do it themselves, or the town does it.
Okay.
Um, so we weren't, it wasn't anything that was discussed, so on the side of caution, I took under responsibility.
Well, I read through the notice of appeal sent by the town very carefully, nowhere in here does it mention anything about the homeowner bearing the cost of any certified mail. You can review the notice of appeal, I assume you have it, it doesn't say anything about that.
What about in the, in the, um, paperwork to file the appeal, to actually fill out the?
It's in the organ.
It's in the organ. It's not in, in the notice, uh, that was sent to Mr. Rodalowicz. Doesn't say anything about the.
I would say we review that at the later date, well, I'm just trying to be fair.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to be, um, I think I'm being more than fair by giving him a stay of any fine for sixty days, but I do think he needs to write a check for the, for the mailing.
Anyone else that brought an appeal would have to pay that, it's not fair to other people that appeal decisions.
Okay.
One that was here before him, I am sure she paid for her own certified mail.
She did.
Well, it wasn't given, he brought, he brought the notice of appeal to the town, and nobody told him that he had the option.
And it's in the zoning ordinance, it's in the zoning ordinance that you have to do that. So you just have to read your zoning ordinance and you'll know about it.
It should be in the notice of violation, because it tells you about your right to appeal and the thirty days and the fine. and the findings, and so on and so forth, and it says, you know, how to file the appeal, and where it needs to be addressed, it says nothing about having to bear the cost of certified mail.
It doesn't say anything about noticing abutters either, does it? But it is in the ordinance, so you have, that's how it works.
I don't know why you can't give him some additional time to reimburse the town then.
Okay, what I would say is the reimbursement, I'd like to have a motion to have the reimbursement be paid, but give him the sixty days to pay it in, when we review it.
No.
No?
No, reimbursement by the end of March.
All right.
Cleanup by the end of April.
How does the rest of the board feel on this?
I can agree with that.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion to that, and the motion is?
I did.
Okay, that.
We, we stay the vi- we stay the fine of the violation for sixty days, and give Mr. Radowitz sixty days to continue the cleanup of his property to a, to a standard acceptable to the zoning enforcement officer, and that he is required to pay the reimbursement to the town for the notification of the abutters by the end of March.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, made in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, and this, also, I'd like to have a motion that we continue this for sixty days. Uh, do I have a motion we continue this?
So moved.
Reinspection?
Do we have a date certain from the clerk?
Mo- motion, uh, made, is it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, seconded?
Excuse me, May sixth?
May sixth.
That would be the first Wednesday in May.
And that's sixty days, so, yeah, that'll work.
Okay, so that'd be May sixth. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Thank you.
Can we prepare the order?
Can we prepare, do I need to present?
We prepare a decision, so.
I mean, we're gonna be able to visit the site at any time in that next sixty days, no?
Correct. Far as I understand. Right?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, do we have anything else we'd like to discuss tonight?
Um, if we're done here, um.
Thank you very much for coming, and, and thank you for your participation, both of you.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Yeah, I did wanna say something.
Well, I mean, is it, is it, does it need to be part of the meeting?
No.
Okay.
Well, all those who want to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
All right, any nays, ayes have it. Okay, we're adjourned.
So, uh, I just wanted to say, if you haven't heard, tonight is my last meeting. Um, I tendered my, um, notice with the town last week. Next Wednesday will be my last day. Um, I've taken a, a position with the planning department in South Kingston.
Oh, okay.
Good for you.
It's closer for you, correct?
I'm gonna miss you.
I'm, I'm gonna miss this too. Yeah. I don't have to do, I don't have to do zoning in South Kingston.
Well, congratulations. Wish you a lot of luck down there.
Today's what, three, four?
Yeah, so, you're kidding, right?